Yeah, vacations are never the same anymore. I'm like, oh, this is an interesting fiscal operation. How they do their, anyway. All right, well, we almost, is everybody good to go ahead and kick it off? Should I wait for the, there we are. All right. Thank you, everyone. We are getting started off with PDC today and a special thanks to Greg because we are having fuller and fuller agendas as we're working together on this and I really appreciate that. But we're going to kick it over to Tom Martin for a minute for planning.
LG Flint has submitted site plan for construction of the office expansion. They're building on 3008 Barshill Circle.
We've received site plans for the construction of a gym facility with associated parking at 1001 and 1009 Dillett Drive. We've also received an application proposing the rezoning of 1516 Greenview Drive, 794 and 798 Leesville Road to allow the construction of a convenience store. It's called a C store. We can't confirm or deny that it's something that my grandson calls Wawa. But anyway, also received a site plan proposing the construction of a trail system to connect the Awareness Garden to the new parking lot on Langren Road. And we've also received the site plans for Heritage Park improvements, which will include walkways, pickleball courts, lighting of existing fields and other amenities. So quite a few things moving forward. And with that, it's Mr. Kevin Henry.
Yeah, very good. Well, thank you for having me. This topic has generated some recent conversation and it's been actually good for staff to kind of do a deep dive into it, learn a little bit more about it. But there has been a lot of questions about it. We do have various cases ongoing throughout the city, which we're not going to discuss during this. This is more of like an overview, kind of big picture. And hopefully too, to prime you a little bit, I know not all of council is here for this meeting, but you do have a public hearing this evening regarding a group home. So there will be a quiz, you know, to make sure you're ready to go for seven o'clock tonight. But anyways, here we go. So since there is sort of, a lot of terminology has been floating out there as far as what a group home is, what a recovery home may be. So we'll, we'll start there and you know, as you can see up there, Webster's defines a group home as a residence for persons requiring care or supervision. Very simple, you know, it's, it's somebody that needs some sort of supervision or care to live in the residence that they're within. As you can see there, recovery home as defined by US federal code, a shared living environment that is or purports to be free from alcohol and illicit drug use and centered on peer support and connection to services that promote sustained recovery from substance abuse disorders. So you can see a little similar to a group home, but a little more specific too. And pointing that out too is recovery home is not a, is not a group home, at least defined by state. And I'm going to cover that in some following slides here of the differences between the two of them. And then at the bottom there is things that are listed as disabilities. And the Federal Fair Housing Act defines a disability as individuals with mental or physical impairments that substantially limit one or more major life activities. And one of those major life activities may be owning a house, living in a house, residing somewhere they consider a major life activity and those disabilities are listed down there. But we'll get a little more specific into Lynchburg and Virginia, how we kind of view those things and how it's written into code and what some of the nuances are, maybe differences between how it's defined there. Especially Lynchburg's is much more specific. So the different types of group homes that we have out there, mental disability, physical disability, elderly infirm, foster care, we're not going to spend a whole lot of time on the foster care one, but those top three are very common ones that we have throughout the city. You can see there that I have listed at the bottom, alcohol and substance abuse recovery, not classified as a group home. You might say, why are we having a conditional use permit this evening? Going to cover that here in a couple of slides. Ed is a larger facility. I know that it's 36, I believe, residents that are going to be in that. And like I said, I'll, I'll cover that here in a couple of slides down. Here's Lynchburg's code as far as a group home goes. This is how we define a group home. And I'm not going to read this word for word. That's quite a bit. It's probably, it might even be the longest definition we have in the zoning ordinance for the group home. But the areas that I've highlighted on there are the key elements sort of to pay attention to when we're talking about group homes. You can see the first there, this is sort of the qualifying criteria for, for residents, four or more individuals. That's sort of our baseline. So okay, more than that, where do we go from there? Okay, so there's two different categories there that the state defines it. And I know I have the state code listed at the bottom there, 15.22291. It sort of mirrors Lynchburg's code or vice versa, that Lynchburg mirrors state code. It's not verbatim, but very close. But if you want to reference that, that's there for you. But the two different categories are a residential facility in which no more than eight individuals with mental illness, intellectual disability, developmental disability, have a resident counselor, shall be considered for all purposes residential occupancy by a single household. So if it fits that category, it's by rights, what we refer to as by right use. We've got, we're going to treat it like a regular single family home. But if you keep reading, right after that says, for the purposes of this section, mental illness, developmental disability shall not include current illegal use or addiction to a controlled substance. So that's kind of where we're talking about recovery homes, not really fitting into that definition here. And then the licensing authority on that particular section is Department of Behavioral Health through the state. And similarly, number two, though, the big difference, this is dealing with physical disabilities. And there's no more than four are allowed to reside in one of those. Same thing again, if it meets that criteria, treated like a single family home, allowed by right. Little difference, Social Services, Virginia Department of Social Services is the licensing authority here on this one. So I know that's a lot to chew on as far as Lynchburg code goes. That's kind of where we're at with locally, as far as how we look at group homes. Now, when is a CUP required? So these are the three criteria there, more than eight residents with mental disability, more than four residents that are elderly or physically disabled. And then the one that you all are hearing tonight, more than three residents with alcohol, substance abuse disability. And that's our criteria if, when you would see a conditional use permit come before council for a decision. Obviously, as I noted before, if you're equal to or less than any of those numbers listed there, it's a single family use. It's allowed by right. We're treating it just like a single family household. I got a few examples for group homes that are in Lynchburg currently. The one on the left has existed for about four years or so. And the one on the right is almost been around 20 years or so, nearly 20 years at this point. They, they blend into the neighborhoods. A lot of times residents, neighboring residents don't even know that they exist unless they really have talked to these folks and know who's, who's residing there. But you know, the, the code you saw, especially Lynchburg's, very long. This topic can be convoluted. Certainly there's stigmas that can, that can be labeled on some of these type of facilities. It's tricky to navigate. And so, you know, what you saw before you, these are staff interpretations on the city code of, of how we're handling this currently. And that interpretation could certainly be appealed at any point in time. You know, if we're dealing with a certain case that they feel like the city's not interpreting the code correctly, that can be appealed to our Board of Zoning Appeals and so on and so forth, and move its way on up through court. So on and so forth. But I do put this up here for public purposes. I know you all know how to get ahold of our department. But you know, folks that are out there inquiring about group homes, they can certainly call us, email. We'll investigate, answer questions, funnel it to where I need to, either through the state or our city attorney's office. Thank you. You're welcome.
How does that interplay usually, is there any recent examples where that's actually been used? And that process goes forward through that Board of Zoning Appeals?
Um, yeah, we have meetings as needed and we had a case, the very last case that they had was in August. And it not anything to do with group homes. So no, we had, we don't have anything about group homes that we have taken through the Board of Zoning Appeals. But it was an appeal that went through the board. It's a public hearing. So residents were able to get up, voice their opinions one way or the other. Property owner was certainly there and was able to, to discuss it with them. And the board just looks at those facts that are present and makes a decision one way or the other, similar to what you all do for like a CUP or a rezoning or something along those.
Make a recommendation to the full.
They, they are a final decision.
Final decision.
Correct. And if, if an appellant or even the city for that matter, is not happy with the decision that's been made, it can be appealed to Circuit Court. And if you're not happy with that decision, that can be appealed to Supreme Court, Virginia Supreme Court.
Thank you for explaining the process.
Kevin, I just wanted to thank you. I had requested this presentation because a lot of the terms, as you mentioned in the beginning and, and broke out on the slides, can get convoluted and conflated. And I think that's happened in a number of situations recently with, with zoning. But I'm very grateful that municipalities in Virginia have a lot of zoning authority. And thank you so much for putting this together.
Yeah, you're welcome. Anything else? Yeah.
All right. Who's up next? I don't have names. All right.
Community Hub project, that's going to be me and Clay Simmons. Our Deputy Director of Public Works, Gaynell, is at the Mid-Atlantic American Public Works Association Conference. So we have Clay here with us today, who has been leading this project for go to, next slide. Oh, there's a clicker over here. So a little project overview here, I think. Utter and Mayor Taylor were on council in late 2023 when we had a retreat over at the IT training room. And we discussed some excess fund balance that was available for one-time projects. And there were a number of one-time projects that council ultimately moved forward with funding for. One of them was the renovation of the former White Rock Elementary School in the White Rock neighborhood. In January of 2024, City Council appropriated those funds, three and a half million dollars for this project. You can see a picture of the school on the top left. It's a, it is a beautiful historic looking school building. And you can see on the picture on the bottom left, just how kind of central it is to the neighborhood. The White Rock neighborhood is very much built in a traditional way. You know, the homes are close together. It's walkable by nature. And the way this school fits kind of in that triangle between three streets really makes it a community hub, community anchor. Previously, and I think for, you know, 30 plus years, it was used as the Head Start program. And ultimately, the folks from Head Start moved out because the building had some ADA issues, primarily it lacked an elevator, which made it very difficult to get grants and, and made it difficult to use that, that the building for any federally funded programming because it was, had some ADA accessibility issues. So you see there, the, the school itself was built in 1912. It's just over 14,000 square feet and it's built in a very traditional way. If you walk in and you go into the basements, you've got the administrative offices, some restrooms, some other office space. And then on the second and the third floor, you've got a, a shared common area in the middle, in the middle, and then four classrooms kind of in a, in a square pattern in each of those, on each of those floors. So there's eight total classrooms there. This project contemplates adding an interior elevator for ADA compliance. There'll be flexible community and workspaces there. And then we will seek tax credit funding for this project as well. We, we anticipate looking, going through the process to access both state and federal tax credits. And we estimate that there's probably upwards of a million dollars or more in additional funding that we'll have access to through that tax credit process. And we've already, already down the road some way on that, on that process. City's done tax credit projects in the recent past. I think the, the most, the most similar would probably be Miller Center, where we use tax credits to help fund some of that project. It is a relatively onerous process, but it is going to give us substantial funding, potential for substantial funding. So it's worth going down that, that path. One of the things that we wanted to make sure that we did with this project is intense community engagement and participation in, in ultimately what this, what this community hub will turn into. To that end, we had a community hub kickoff event in September of 2024, basically invited the community in and told them a little bit about the project, where we were headed and that we wanted their input here on this project. We actually hired a firm to help us with this community development effort. It was a, a, a architecture firm that were, that, you know, ultimately took the input that we received from the communities, turned it into preliminary concept drawings. About a month later, in November or two months later, we had a community pitch day where we invited the community to come in and make their pitch as to what they would like to see this venue used for. It was a really fun day. We had a, a building tour for the community on May 30th. And then we prevented our, we presented the final concept plans to the community on late May this year. So what did we hear for the community, the themes? Childcare, so both education and, and programming, food and nutrition. There is a, off the school, to the side of the school, there is a community room that has a full commercial kitchen in it now, which has a number of potential uses. We heard recreation, wellness, library services. One of the things we heard is a nonprofit and potential community services hub. So the, the thought being from the community is, you know, while there might, there may or may not be nonprofits that, you know, ultimately sort of begin in this facility in, in, in terms of maybe like an accelerator. But, but likely what you'd see is nonprofits that provide services, have space in here that they occupy certain days of the week or have satellite offices in, so the community has access to those services. We heard a lot about entrepreneurship, helping community members with ideas for business ventures, have a place to go to explore, putting together business plans or maybe even having a startup hub there where, where businesses might be able to germinate. Yeah, you know, start out and then move into other spaces. And then there was a strong request for a public safety presence, which, you know, in, in our mind, what we heard was a police substation, which is essentially a place where there is an office for a police officer or officers. It's not always occupied, but there's probably office hours where, where folks in the community knew there'd be a police officer there at, at regular intervals. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Clay, who will go through some of the concept drawings and what we're looking at going forward.
Okay, so starting with site plan. And, and what we're trying to do, these were the, these slides were generated from the final report by the consultant that did the public engagement. So what we're doing right now is we've got a design firm onboard, architectural and engineers that will be working to convert those to working drawings that we can then build from. Okay, so a lot of this is just going to reflect what was shown to the public previously. But the hope is, is that we captured a lot of what Greg was saying, the community's desires were to see in the facility. So again, starting with the site plan, we're looking at updated outdoor play and recreation spaces for relatively young children, between two to 12 years, split up between a couple of different locations on the site. Outdoor gathering spaces where, you know, again, people can come and relax, watch their kids, as well as potentially do outdoor programming, a little bit of recreation space and the idea of a half court basketball court. And one of the things that this doesn't go into though, is the need, the site is actually relatively steep coming from the Tulip Street side down towards Poplar Street. And as Greg had mentioned before, ADA within the building itself is a big concern. It's also a big concern on the site. You know, how are we going to get people actually to the building to get them to an elevator and meet ADA standards? So that's one of the big things that we're focused on right now with the, with the current consultant. With that, I will move along. The basement and ground floor plan, again, sort of going by colors, the, the orange area on the, on the basement air plan are meeting rooms. The gray area is still, is going to continue to be your utility areas where a lot of your mechanical equipment is going to reside still. While we can update the building, it's going to be awfully hard and expensive to change the nature of it altogether. And then the, the white areas are reception areas, restrooms, stairways and that sort of thing. So a lot of just functional building, basic space. stairways and that sort of thing. So a lot of just functional building, basic space. Off to the right on this slide, we do show the, the cafeteria and meeting room space, which again, we see a lot of opportunities for that to continue as, as a meeting space, as well as potentially serve as food, education and nutritional education spaces. Moving on to the first floor plan. Again, this is where you start getting our partner departments within the city getting more involved. There are parks and recreation spaces on this first floor as well as public library spaces. And again, the, you know, for classroom presentations and programming and that sort of thing that those individual departments do. So those rooms would be structured accordingly and would, I assume, change over time as the programming evolved. Second floor plan, this is where we're getting into, you know, the idea of having the nonprofit tenants as well as business development, entrepreneurship opportunities. And, and again, just giving some generic layouts of what those areas might look like moving forward. We did keep the, the elevator is internal to the building and that turned out to be a a requirement really of the tax credits. We had initially envisioned doing an exterior elevator, thinking that it might be simpler for the structure and it would be an easier way to meet ADA. But it does have some downsides to it with the tax credit process. So right now we're working to stick with an internal elevator for the project. And moving on, just kind of covering where we're at. We've got a design consultant onboard as well as a firm acting as a sub to them for the historic tax credit process. We're moving both of those processes along concurrently together. Although the, the tax credits are really what's going to drive the timeline of the project. We, we think we can have design plans done really, really quickly, but the tax credits are just going to, that's going to rely on that process playing out and and is going to be the ultimate driver towards construction. So Dominion Seven is our design consultant, they're a local firm that's working with us. Commonwealth Preservation Group are the historic tax credit specialists that are acting as a sub to them. And I believe that's it for us. If anybody has any questions, be happy to answer them at this time. But do I have one more slide? Trying to get out of here early. Again, kind of thinking design time-wise with what we're projecting for the tax credits to be sometime in the late winter of 2027. They'll have full construction documents and we always get the consultants' estimate of probable cost for the building with that. We do believe that we're not going to have, in fact, we're really certain that we're not going to have adequate funding to, to rehabilitate the entire structure. So we are going to design the entire project with the idea that we would likely go on ahead and bid the entire project, but do so in such a way that we will be able to see, you know, what like the second floor versus the first floor versus the basement versus the cafeteria would cost to give us some cut points and also give us some good targets to come back and see conditional funding. So the, and again, we're hoping to get it out for bid spring of 2027, which again, sort of late winter into early spring of 2027 to do that. And as I said before, the historic tax credit process is going to be the driver on the schedule.
What's the objective time for the citizens to be able to have some use of this property?
Some use of that property, it's going to depend. Yeah, it, it would be, it would probably be late 2027, early 2028. I agree. So, and, and again, it's going to, most likely it's going to be limited. You know, because we're just not going to be able to get to the entire facility with the funding that we
The good thing is we'll have the elevator replaced, which will make federal funding accessible. It's a, it's an excellent project to consider for potential community development block grant funding as well for different, different phases there.
Any further questions?
Updates, the person has asked me how the process is going. So it's good to have an update so we can share with them and more of a stronger time period. So that's very helpful. Just one other quick concern, I've, I've mentioned several times about some issues we've had in White, whether we had in White Rock, especially at this, the past week with the three shootings, since we're here, let's talk about that now. With the three shooters this past week right in front of that convenience store. I mean, during the event, we talked about it during the event when we talked with the residents. And I appreciate you including the residents in all those conversations. That has been really helpful where the residents are part of that conversation and really good. So we have seen some issues in that store, convenience store on, on part of Gray Street on Florida Avenue. So I'll just bring to your attention again, and also talk to our police department about, I know they're working on whatever happened, whatever happened, it just happened. So we need to make sure we're addressing that issue and we're continuing to monitor that and talk with the store owners. But what they can do, what we can do, so persons will always linger in front of that building. It just draws attention, it draws problems. It draws, now like a shooting. So just some kids could have been there, something of that nature. Somebody could have got seriously hurt. I mean, shootings are horrible anyway. Someone could have got killed. So we just make sure we just bring it to your attention again, as well as our police department, what we can do as a community and as a city to address that issue and just put some more enforcement there or whatever could be done to address that. Thank you.
I, I do have a couple of questions, just going back to the project briefly, and I appreciate Dr. Wilder's comments. But kind of steering back to the timeline of the project and some of the technical components of the project. I, I'm, I'm assuming the historic credits would be through the National Park Service. Is that?
The federal credits, I think, would be, though I'm not an expert there, but the state credits would be through the Department of, the State Department of Housing or the state, the State Department of Historic Resources.
Okay. Um, thank you. And then just as I'm kind of connecting some of the different projects we've been working on in the timeline and the, kind of the RFP process. Was Dominion Seven a part of the pool or the library as far as the early initial community outreach and then the design, preliminary design development as far as the engineering side?
Dominion Seven was not a part of the library project.
Okay.
At all, that, that I recall.
Okay. Do you know if they were on the pool? It's, it's fine either way. I'm just kind of tracking the, kind of our process and how that goes out for bid and the
So they are
Okay.
group who are the time for the Miller Park pool.
Okay, okay. That's great. And I know they've worked on stuff with the schools and I have appreciated a lot of the information they've provided. So that's great. Okay, awesome. Thank you, Clay. Anything else before we move to the next agenda item? Right. Well, I'm assuming that it's you, Holly. It's great to see you.
Note to self, let's put some names on the agenda.
Holly, that's for sure.
Waiting until we're chair, I snare her. You're participating in mustaches for kids again this year. I could tell. Awesome.
So we are talking about Kemper Street for the next couple of minutes. I want to orient everyone on the first slide to kind of where we are. If you come off the expressway, the bottom left picture is kind of driving down Kemper Street. The property we're talking about is on the left. I wanted to put in the aerial view of the property on the right so you can kind of see its current condition. And then you'll see a map up top where you see the yellow circled area is where the bus transfer station is located, as well as our Kemper Street, Kemper Street Station for Amtrak. And that's going to be important later in the presentation. So I just wanted to kind of point out their proximity to each other as we go through this. Okay, so why are we talking about Kemper Street? You guys may know that it was initially considered as a site for the police station, but once we started talking about design of police station, that site was no longer big enough, especially when you include it parking. So we had to think about alternate uses for that site as well. So there's a couple of things I need to kind of talk about upfront. You can see that whole blue box den area is the whole piece of property. There's a little area that's in a red box that is thirteen oh five Kemper. So together it's thirteen oh five and twelve oh one. Just the twelve oh one portion is about 1.7 acres. The little red box is less than an acre. The little red box, it, it still has an FTA participation in that piece of property. And the reason why that is, is because when we first we owned the property and then GLTC purchased the property from us in 1983. When GLTC purchased these two parcels from us, the area that has the little red box around it, they used FTA funds to purchase that property. When we requested to have the property back to build the police station there, we had to request permission from the FTA to use that property for a public purpose. And if we used it for that public purpose for a specific number of years, then FTA would be released from basically the deed for that property. Since we did not use it for a police station, we have to take into consideration FTA's investment in that property in 1983. So I have been working with them and their team of attorneys to have a full and final release from the property because we can't move forward with a whole lot of planning until FTA is removed from the deed. So I just kind of wanted to explain that before we went through the whole presentation as to maybe why development hasn't happened maybe faster in that area. So bluff, if you guys don't know, we use bluff a lot. It stands for bottom line upfront. So just kind of talk about the bottom line upfront. Continue to work on having FTA released from the property. Continuing grant partnerships to talk about the development of that property, which we're going to talk about a bit. And then in the meantime, while those things are going on, being very smart about using the property for city needs until we get to the point where we can do development. So we were awarded a very competitive grant, the Thriving Communities Grant. I think only like twenty localities in the country received the grant. We were one of them. So it was a pretty big deal. We partnered with the Central Virginia Planning District Commission and GLTC to receive that grant. I'm going to talk more about it on the next slide, so I won't go into a lot of detail here. Has a three-year scope and the Kemper Street intersection is one of the first priorities in the plan. There are multiple plans that call for the Kemper Street site to be used as a mixed-use residential transit-oriented development. So that's a mouthful. Couple of things there, transit-oriented development, if you're not a planner like myself and want to know what that means. I, I had to do a lot of research around this when I became involved in this project and thank goodness Tom Martin's team has taught me everything I know and has been very helpful. Basically, it's a community that you try to create with housing and jobs near resources and your best source of transportation. And when I refer to plans call for a mixed-use residential transit-oriented development, two specific plans, well, three actually, that I'm referring to. The Code of Virginia requires any city that has more than 20,000 in their population to consider in their comprehensive plan, an area for a transit-oriented development. So our comprehensive plan will include an area, this seems to be a really good spot for that because of its proximity to both the train station and the transfer station. That's why I wanted to make sure I showed that on the first slide. So with the Code of Virginia requiring that, obviously our comprehensive plan looked for multiple places within the city that would be unique for that. This would be a good opportunity to incorporate that. The other plan is the Diamond Hill Neighborhood Plan that Charlotte Lester and Tom Martin and the rest of their team has worked on very diligently in getting community input. Many people in the community asked for mixed-use residential. So the transit-oriented and mixed-use residential is kind of combined by both of those plans. And that is hopefully what the site will be used for. However, based on the prior use of that site, it was the GLTC transfer station and the garage, as well as neighboring properties around there. Those of you that have lived here a long time like I have, you actually remember Glen Trent, who used to be right across the street from there. This was a very kind of transportation-oriented area, if you remember Lynchburg a long time ago. And because of those uses, specifically the GLTC garage, there's some environmental mitigation that would have to happen basically under the ground that would need to happen before it could be developed. And so part of what we're doing also through the Thriving Communities Grant is working on finding ways to potentially apply for grants to do that. Go ahead and do that environmental mitigation because it will make it much more of a better prospect for development down the road. So between Marjette and Tom, we are trying to explore all the grants that we can. Again, cannot apply for many of those grants until the FTA is released from the property. So the Thriving Communities Grant, what they're doing for us, they have consultants that work with us that specialize in transportation projects, as well as just community development projects. They came and did a site visit back in June. And they are working on giving us a clear picture of how we move towards the things that we have planned for that site. One of the big things they're doing is creating for us what is called, and I'll make sure I get it right, Funding Playbook. And that Funding Playbook will help us figure out how we can do some of those mitigation strategies, as well as prepare the site for development. They are also basically working on a whole 12th Street corridor and working on improving pedestrian safety, improving different means of transportation and doing some of those things in addition to potential design and funding for the property. So in the meantime, while all of this planning is going on, we want to be practical and use the property the best way we can. As you guys know, Memorial Avenue Fuel Site has to be reconstructed. And in the meantime, while that's being reconstructed, all of our many, many fleet vehicles over 900 have to have somewhere to get gas. And so the site will be used as a temporary fuel site while the Memorial Avenue Fuel Site is being reconstructed. A lot of people have asked me, what does that look like? So I included a picture on the, yes. I've included a picture of what a temporary fuel site might look like. That's the number one question that I get. And that is supposed to take around a year. The, when I last talked with Clay, I'm glad he's here. It sounds like we are currently in the process of getting a bid underway to be able to start construction. There is about a ten-week lead time. Look at me sounding like I know what I'm talking about. Before we could actually start construction. Construction on Memorial Avenue will coincide with the temporary fuel site on Kemper Street. So they will go together. So it'll probably be the first of the year before that gets underway. It's expected to take about seven months. So it looks like maybe end of the summer next year. Fuel site will be done, temporary fuel site will be removed from Kemper Street, and then we'll be at the timeframe when we're ready to move into development opportunities for that property. That's it. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. Very helpful. Now, I'm just trying to remember, was that spot supposed to be for Horizon or something or was that originally talked about that?
It was one of the spots that was considered when, when they were looking for spots for their new property that I think you guys are going to visit next week.
Yes. So I didn't know that they had changed. I know we'd looked at something else, but I didn't know they changed. I might have just missed some things there, but thank you for the update. I really appreciate it. And I think it's important for us as a city to look at all these vacant spots, especially for that corridor, because right off the highway, it's coming into the city and it needs to be, you know, spruced up. So I'm glad to see that, that the city is addressing that. So really, so it's a great initiative for the city part to look at the areas where there are vacant spots that we as a city can make more attractive, especially where people come into the city. And we want to continue to be a growing city and attract people to our city. We need to make sure those corridors coming to the city look more encouraging to want to visit the city. So I'm thankful that this has been vacant for, for, for a lot, for a while. And it's like a really excellent project. And they're utilizing the spot for the temporary gas station. That's really grasshopper, gas station or whatever. I think it's really helpful that shows the city is really thinking long-term and how we can utilize other spots of our community to address the needs of the construction piece on Memorial Avenue. So thank you for the information and update. It looks really nice. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions?
All right. Two quick ones. Well, first is a thank you for including the picture because I definitely was about to ask you what that looked like. And then so this may actually not work well with the intended use of the space, but I'm curious.
Okay.
So when we're looking at kind of this underground work and then developing the mixed-use space and granted, we're wanting to develop a lot of that there because it's connected in with the bus system and various things. But is there the potential to But is there the potential to, um, incorporate some kind of underground parking if you're having taller structures? I, I just know in my, in my past life, in my urban downtown life experience, that was such a game changer to have that parking space that was associated, but it was underneath the building. And so if we're already going to be doing kind of that underground work, is that potential to be incorporated here or is, I mean, anyway, it?
Parking exists at ground level and above, and then apartments on top of that.
Okay.
In that, I, I just don't know from a, from a, a water stamp, water table.
That makes sense. Yep.
Potentially flooding issues.
Very different terrain and all.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, but absolutely. I think if you, if you were to build a, a development that looks, uh, similar to this.
And I didn't know how set that was.
Yeah. You very well may see parking underneath the actual, um, the, the apartments themselves.
Okay. Just curious.
So I need for food. It's kind of a food desert restaurant-wise or even grocery store. Um, so I'll keep saying that as long as I can. Um, having worked at the Kemper Street Train Station and, uh, usually we had to drive to get lunch almost every day. So I think there's real opportunities there for somebody. Um, given that there's parking issues, uh, it's what stopped the police station. You know, she's trying to address it with underground. Um, an alternative is bus stops and, and bicycles. You know, just, uh, the multimodal sort of solutions. Is there going to be room in this for a bus stop and, and bike parking and bike paths?
So that is actually one of the things that the Thriving Communities Grant is actively working on is looking at additional spaces. There's actually going to be a multi, multimodal transportation plan actually for the whole 12th Street corridor. And so many of what you're talking about is going to be included in that plan as well. So they're already planning for that, um, even before a development, um, possibly goes there. Um, back to hoping for additional, um, food spaces. The neighborhood there would also agree with you. Um, the reason they're asking for it to be mixed residential is they want commercial on the bottom. And the things that they've asked for, fresh produce. If you look at the Diamond Hill Plan, fresh produce, um, grocery, laundry mat. We're the three biggest, um, and pharmacy were some of the biggest things that they were requesting. So, um, good eye there as well.
Thank you.
That first floor looked like a commercial.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yep.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Holly.
Take it away, Greg. You've got the.
Both of the next items, uh, the sale of 1505 and 1517 Jackson Street, which is the former Op House, um, will be a public hearing that comes back to council in December. And then the deed of lease for the airport hangar is a public hearing, uh, tonight. So since both of those are public hearings, we won't, we won't ask, uh, PDC to take a vote at this point in time. But turn it over to, uh, Marjette for Jackson Street and then Cedric Simon for the airport hangar lease.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Timmer, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Deemer, and Councilmember Wilder. Thank you for the opportunity to present this item concerning the proposed sale and redevelopment of the city-owned property at 1505 and 1517 Jackson Street. Um, the property includes the historic Opportunity House building and the adjoining vacant lot. And both of those have been owned by the city since 1983. So purpose in action is, the purpose of this item is to brief you all of the committee on the proposed redevelopment and sale of these city-owned properties. And staff requests that the committee recommend forwarding this item to City Council for that public hearing on December the 9th, at which time council will be asked to authorize the city manager to execute the land sale and development agreement with Lynchburg Services LLC. The city acquired these two parcels, as I said, in 1983. The main structure was built in 1853 and has been largely vacant since 2016. The properties were identified, we're, we're talking a lot today about the Diamond Hill, um, Neighborhood Plan, as priority sites for reuse that could strengthen childcare access and support neighborhood stabilization. In May of 2025, the city issued an RFP that remained open for seven weeks. We had two public open houses and they were held in early June to engage residents. One qualified proposal was received from Lynchburg Services LLC for the redevelopment of this site as an early learning childcare center. So this is a, a photo of the Opportunity House and the vacant lot is on the, um, right-hand side. So Lynchburg Services LLC proposes to purchase the property for $200,000 and then to invest over $800,000 to establish an early learning childcare center that could serve between 120 and 150 children and could create as many as 25 to 30 new jobs. The property has been, uh, been vacant for nearly a decade and the city has continued to bear the cost of maintaining the property, securing the property. This redevelopment turns an underutilized asset into an active revenue-producing property that meets a documented community need. Um, it's a model example of how city-owned property can be transformed through partnership and reinvestment. And it's a clear win for both the neighborhood and the city. So these are the conceptual drawings of the prospective owner's plan. Um, it shows the redevelopment, the land sale and development agreement was prepared by the city attorney. It includes performance milestones and clawback provisions to ensure timely completion. Construction is anticipated to begin within 12 months of the closing. And the proceeds from this sale will be directed to the city's revolving land fund, which will support future economic development projects, including site readiness, infrastructure, due diligence works for other city-owned properties. This fund allows one successful project to help finance the next, continuing Lynchburg's momentum in neighborhood revitalization. So, oops, I went too far. Closing slide is, just to let you all know, and I'll act this one out, um, is a win for families, neighborhoods, and economic vitality. In closing, I would just say the project reactivates a vacant historic building, expands childcare opportunities for working families, generates private investment and reinvests the proceeds into future development. This is a win for families, neighborhoods, and economic vitality in the city of Lynchburg. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any question?
We have child, childcare, just like you said about the grocery stores. We have childcare deserts as well. Very important use, reuse of that, that property. Really exciting just to even be here today and listen to all the things that are going on here today. Y'all are doing great work.
Thank you. All right. Cedric, you're up.
All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman Wilder. Um, I'm here today to talk to you about, uh, a lease agreement, a proposed lease agreement between the city of Lynchburg and Bon Air Brokerage LLC. Um, the space that we're recommending for lease is a hangar. Uh, we're calling it Hangar 12. It's a hangar at Lynchburg Regional Airport's 12,000 square feet with associated office space. There's about three offices in there. Um, the current tenant has asked the airport to, uh, terminate their current contract. They were under, uh, a lease agreement with the city of Lynchburg and they are stepping away from aviation. So they asked us to terminate that. So we posted, we started the RFP process back in September of this year to try to get another tenant for that space. We received two proposals, one from Freedom Aviation, one for Bon Air Brokerage. Um, the RFP committee reviewed those and we recommend, uh, awarding to Bon Air. The proposed lease term will be five years. The, uh, rent, 13,500 a month with, uh, escalators every year. Also of note on this is, uh, Bon Air has a business partner, Davis Air, who will be, who's listed as a grantor on the lease. So that takes care of some other issues. Um, again, Steph, just recommend, this will come before public hearing tonight at City Council. So I'll be speaking to y'all again on that and, uh, recommending that council approve the lease agreement between the city and Bon Air. I can make any clarifications if needed.
Cedric, we've gotten to see so much of you lately. It's really fun.
I, this is probably my last lease agreement for a little while.
Okay. All right. Well, uh, any questions?
The medical transport is Davis Air, who's a grantor on this and Bon Air will be the primary leasing.
They're still getting some space that they need.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Excellent. So to make sure, that's what I thought.
Awesome. Well, I don't, I don't have any further questions. I don't see anybody else does either. That was the most expedient presentation and, uh, uh, thank you. Love seeing you.
It is a pretty nice hangar.
Uh, there's a public hearing, so we're not going to take a vote here in PDC. Awesome. Roll call. Mr. Mayor.
Oh, it's good. And we need to protect our citizens. Yeah, anything we can do towards, uh, curbing the crime in White Rock, we need to do it. And the rest of the city.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Just mentioned, I appreciate your effective leadership of this committee and efficiently running things. And, uh, keep up the great work.
Thank you. Um, just to reiterate, we have the ongoing discussion with dear population. Thank you so much for putting that task force together with Meche. Looking forward to meeting with you all on that. Um, and same with the property valuation stuff. Really appreciate all the follow-up, back and forth and education there. So, um, thank you. I don't have further items right now. Uh, so you're, you've got my current list. So, uh, thank you so much. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is January. Yeah? Okay. January 6th. No, January 13th. Okay. Yep. Okay. January 13th, um, in the training room. Yes, here in the training room. Yeah.
Presentation.
Uh, Finance Committee in December.
Cool.
Definitely want to attend that.
Yeah. I know you requested that and it, uh, was probably a better fit, uh, in finance. So we got special there.
All right. Anything else before I finally get the date right for our next regularly scheduled meeting? All right. Next regularly scheduled meeting, Tuesday, January 13th, 2026, at 3:00 PM here in the training room. Thanks so much. Meeting adjourned.
Well, 2025 City Council Work Session. I will now turn it over to City Manager, Wyndham Bender, to go with the agenda.
Members of City Council, glad to be with you this afternoon. It is Wednesday and we all made it here regardless. That's wonderful. Today before us another work session, we have business sign and briefing. What are those? Those are those items that we engage you during the work session and a later City Council formal docket, it comes forward for vote. The City Clerk will be engaging you about boards and commissions. And then under our work session, we have a couple of guests with us this this afternoon. We have the Downtown Lynchburg Association that will talk to you about a did or Downtown Improvement District. Mr. Missions had brought this up in finance. We've talked in a couple, talked about it a couple of times. And then also the MOU that the city has with DLA. So really, really excited for that conversation. Also, we asked for a little bit of time with 1300 Campbell Avenue. So he staffed a little bit more work. And I think I think we're there. So Kent and staff will present on that. And then your rules of procedure that you've been working on. And then there's at least one item for roll call. And Mayor, before I turn it back to you, if anything, I would like to to do a pop up. And why am I going to do a pop up? The pop up relates to Veterans Day. So this past Friday, I had the opportunity to go to the museum. So I'd ask Ted to come forward with David. Just briefly here, we opened a new exhibit at our museum about Vietnam, and it was an impactful event, so much so. I asked Ted to come in and we're going to take a few minutes here.
Yes.
Because several of you served and thank you for your service. And then also the opportunity, Mr. Harker is going to tell you about himself. But one of the more impactful things amongst the many things was not just simply the Corvette that was out front that he he was graciously to bring along. But Mr. Harker actually served for our for for our country, was held captive as a prisoner of war during the Vietnam War for five years, which it turned out to be 1,884 days, if I have that correct, sir. So from 1968 to 1973, he received two Purple Hearts, a Bronze Store and a Bronze Star and a Prisoner of War Medal. So I thought Ted to kind of give you just exactly what's what's there and the opportunity for our residents. And then if if able, Staff Sergeant David Harker to give us just a few a few minutes for about himself that's there as well. So Mayor, if you're okay with that, I'll turn it over to Ted and Mr. Harker.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ted. Welcome, Mr. Harker.
Thank you.
Glad to hear from you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Also, thank you, Mr. City Manager, for inviting us to be here. For the first time ever, there is now an exhibit in our city about Lynchburg and the Vietnam War. This has never happened before since the Vietnam War 50 years ago. Part one of this two part exhibit just opened last Friday, as the City Manager mentioned, at the Lynchburg Museum and Visitor Center. And so we want to make sure that you all know about it, that you spread the word about it, that you come see it. Especially encourage school groups, school classes to come see this. This is a really special thing for our city. The exhibit focuses on the 27 men who were from our city who died in Vietnam, all of whose names are on the terrace for Vietnam at Monument Terrace. Curated displays of artifacts, things like uniforms, medals, dog tags, photographs. All of these things together tell an incredible story about our community, its service and its sacrifice. And there is nobody who better exemplifies that than this man to my left. And if you can do the next slide, please. This is a picture of Mr. Harker when he came home to Lynchburg in 1973. This photo was on the front page of the newspaper. This photo was taken at the Lynchburg Airport. There were an estimated eight or 10,000 people that showed up to greet him when he came home. And he's going to tell you just a little bit about his experience and his response to this exhibit. Mr. Yeah.
Yeah. Mayor Taylor, council members and Mr. Bender, thank you for having me. To start, December the 8th, 1945, Lynchburg, Virginia Baptist Hospital born to Jack and Louise Harker, one of seven children. And of course, growing up in that group, you learn self denial. You're not the most important person. And I think that defines our country. When the call goes out, men leave their comforts of their home and go help in defending our country's freedom and democracy. We did it in Vietnam, and I was a part of that and proud to have been a part of that. But the 27 men whose names are on that wall, you know, just really touched me and it was very moving. I grew up in Lynchburg, know a lot of people in Lynchburg, having played baseball and youth sports in the city. I lived out in Richland Hills, which was in the county in those days, went to Brookfield High School. Went to church at West Lynchburg Baptist Church and Beulah Baptist Church. So religion was a part of my life. And I think of that scripture from John, the 15th chapter, verses 12 and 13, where Christ is pouring out his heart to his disciples. And he says, you know, I give you a command to love one another, just like I love you. And greater love hath no man than he lay down his life for his brother, his friend. And he was speaking of his impending death, but it also secularly, we use that a lot, you know, military funerals because men give of themselves. And I was part of a group of men that got ambushed. I lost my commanding officer, Captain Roland Belcher in in the firefight. We overwhelmed by North Vietnamese that killed our radio men. We didn't have any radio contact. My platoon Sergeant George Seeha from Los Angeles, California, a young guy just got back from R and R visiting his family, was killed and six other men, you know, so a great loss of life. I was very fortunate to survive. And then in my POW camp in South Vietnam, the three years we were held there in horrific conditions, very little to eat, infectious diseases and malaria, I was fortunate to survive. And I was also fortunate to help nurse and take care of men who died, the nine men we buried in those camps. So I'm a Lynchburg guy, but I'm also you're an American guy because I was with men from all over little communities, you know, big cities from all over this country. And I'm, you know, and and I learned there that men and women, of course, in this country, that's what's the heart of this country, not a nuclear weapon, you know, our strength doesn't lie in that. It lies in the soul of our people. And again, you know, when called on, men and women come, and I was very fortunate to come back. I finished at Virginia Tech, got my degree. But this museum exhibit really, again, touched home. It's so well done. I would thank you, Mr. Bender, for being there the other night. I know council members probably had things were going on, couldn't attend, but if you you've got to go, you've got to go look and see what's there and read those biographies of those men. And you know what? When I was reading them, they all went to church. Generation that I grew up in, it wasn't whether you went to church, it's where you went to church, you know, back in those days. But Dickie Crickenberger, he's on the wall. He died at Khe Sonh, three weeks after his son was born. And a classmate of mine, Bobby Jinks, married his widow and raised that son. I know a lot of stories of Lynchburg and his name's up there on the wall. And Russell Blatts that I ran track with at Brookfield High School died on January the 8th, 1968, the day I was captured. I mean, what irony. And just a great, all these are great men. Larry Wirtz, another Brookfield boy, most are Glass and Dunbar people back in the segregated school that I was raised, that we segregation days we were raised in. But all Americans, and I'll tell you this, there is a story that I have. We had five black Americans in our camp. Four of them grew up in the rural South. And we could call them second class citizens and have all the privileges. That's all changed and I'm thankful for that. Over time, that's changed when people change their heart and in in the legislation and all has helped with that, a big movement. But all five of them were offered special privilege. Okay. And we're starving. And we we're desperate for anything. They built a separate hut and they put them in it and they tried to play the race card and they said, we're not doing that. We're going home. We're Americans. They put aside all those issues because they were Americans at heart. That's who they were and I love them. Tom Davis, Isaiah McMillan, Willie, Arthur Willie Watkins, James Alexander Daly, who's passed on, and Robert Lewis. Yeah. Black Americans. And my commanding officer, Roland Belcher, happened to have black skin too. Just but anyway. But we all were in the effort. It is unfortunate we didn't win the war. But this museum tells a story and the schoolchildren today don't know much about Vietnam. There are other issues, you know, the war and terror and maybe. But this will give them an opportunity and I'd encourage, I've already telling all my friends about it. And one wrote me back the other day and he said, David, my wife and I Hannah went down and saw it. He said, it is well done. He said, you know, we saw what you and the other men through these exhibits that were made. So yeah, thank you. Yeah, Ted and and Crystal, you know, for for putting this together and just and it's local, as you know, it's grassroots. It's us that went all from Brookfield, EC Glass, Dunbar, men who grew up in this community and did not get to come home. You know, those are the ones that I think about. But yeah, so thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for helping us. We we could not have done this exhibit without his support, other veterans, Steve Bozeman.
Right. There was a big response to it. We have a real strong veterans group, as all of you know, Steve Bozeman. I call him Super Vet. Yeah. Yeah, love.
So Anne, if you can do the last slide, just to give you some details, you all are invited. Please spread the word. We are on Court Street, right at the top of Monument Terrace. We're open five days a week, Wednesday through Saturday, 10 to 3, and on Sunday from 12 to 3. So every weekend. Admission is always free. We'd love for you to come, bring your friends, bring your family. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Ted, Ted.
This was awesome. Thank you. We worked on time for Charlie from the Marine Corps Reserve in Lynchburg and Alain Bar, province in Iraq in like 2004, I think it was. Because I know that there were some KIs from from that group. And I feel old now, realizing that that's become history, you know, so it'd be great to see. It's great to see this, but it'd be something to look at too. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I turn it back to you.
Okay. Bozen Commission Quarterly Report, Ms. Alicia.
Um, yes. This is your quarterly reporting for your boards and commissions. Here are your upcoming appointments. These will address the December appointments. So diving in is Community Development Advisory Committee. Members meet as needed, usually about once or twice a year. They make recommendations to City Council regarding plans and projects for the CDBG and home programs. Members can serve up to four consecutive one year terms. We have four reappointments and three upcoming vacancies. Interested candidates must reside in designated CDBG census tract. So that would be Diamond Hill, Tyriana, College Hill, or Temper Hill. Next is Horizon. They meet the fourth Wednesday of the month at 4 o'clock over on Langhorn Road. They provide mental health disability and substance abuse services acting as advisor, provider and advocate. Lynchburg members can serve up to three consecutive three year terms. Partial terms do not count. You will have one upcoming vacancy to this board. The Lynchburg Regional Airport Commission, they meet five times a year at 4 o'clock at the airport. They assist in city and planning, organization, direction and administration of Lynchburg Regional Airport. Members can serve three consecutive three year terms. This one, new information has come about since posting this. We'll have actually just two reappointments, two current vacancies and one upcoming vacancies. One of your incumbent has decided they want to enjoy retirement and pass off their volunteer opportunities. Regional representation is allowed and we are currently in need of a Bedford County representative. The Planning Commission, they meet the second and fourth Wednesday of each month at 4 o'clock here in City Hall. They act in advisory capacity to City Council and the planning and development of the city. Members can serve up to three consecutive three year terms. We currently have one vacancy and one reappointment. And of course, we do have some members that are holding over in their positions till their till their successor can be named. Members do have to file a real estate disclosure. Those with technical backgrounds, so engineering or environmental science are encouraged to apply, as well as members of Ward Four and Ward One. So your next steps are a closed session scheduled for Tuesday, December 9th that will address the Q3 and Q4 jointly. Be collecting applications and resumes through Monday, November 24th. As always, you can scan there to get our application and my contact information is in the lower right hand corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, work session, work session items, Downtown Lynchburg Association Improvement District. And Review Memorandum of Understanding, Ms. Stacy.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to present to you all tonight. Chris Boswell is the president of the Downtown Lynchburg Association. And then Greg Patrick, of course, you all know, will be helping me with the Downtown Improvement District presentation. But before we get started with that, I again, just want to thank you all for having us here tonight because I want to like do a trifecta. My trifecta is number one, me introduce you all a little bit more to me. I had a brief introduction to you all when I was hired back in August. Second part of the trifecta, of course, is the Downtown Improvement District, which we'll talk about in just a few minutes. And then the third part of the trifecta is the memorandum of understanding. So I think trifecta is always good. Three in a row tic tac toe. So let's get started with me first. My name is Stacy Garrett. I do live downtown on Jefferson Street with my husband David, who is the Director of Facilities for the Academy. And so we are loving being downtown for the past 11 years. We actually moved from Appomattox County. But a little bit history about me before then, my dad was an Army officer and I moved all over the world and he served for over 21 years. So I definitely appreciated the veterans' presentation because I was able to celebrate not only my dad's 80th birthday over the weekend, but also I was with him yesterday for Veterans Day before I returned to Lynchburg. So greatly appreciate that being added to the museum. I taught school in Appomattox County for over 11 years before I went into residential care and served there for over two decades. Patrick Henry Boys and Girls Home and then Miller Home of Lynchburg, which many of you already know. During that time, I also served as the Appomattox County School Board Chair. So I appreciate the service that you all do because I know what it's like to serve in those capacities. So thank you very much for for serving in a in a volunteer role that sometimes is not always appreciated. So please know that I do appreciate that. One of I think the funniest full circle moments for me was when I was probably in the second or the third grade, I had a very favorite song. And my favorite song was by Petula Clark. And that song was, of course, downtown. So I'm all about group activities. So if you will join me and fill in the blank as we go through just a few lyrics, please. And excuse us all for our voices, but let's do it together. The lights are much brighter there. You can forget all your troubles, forget all your cares and go. Things will be great when you're no finer place for sure. Everything's waiting for you. And so I'm glad to be here and represent you all. Not only for downtown Lynchburg, but also as we talk about the Downtown Improvement District. And how did we get to this point? This point, we were brought together information, I believe, council member, Ms. Gins, you asked, how could we bring a DID or the Downtown Improvement District to downtown? A presentation was presented, I believe, to the Finance Committee back in the spring to four council members. And I believe that presentation showed quite a few interest. And so it was requested at that time that the presentation be given to full council. But also you all were entering your budget season and a busy season at that. So it was moved to this month. Again, the second part of the trifecta. So I think it's perfect that we're following the introduction of me with the DID. And so let's get started on the Downtown Improvement District and and feel free. I don't, what do I do? Okay, all right. So let's go. Did I cut it off? There he is. Okay, so let's go. Sorry, as I get used to handholding. What is a DID? So a DID is a dedicated funding mechanism for improvement. It goes beyond what the city can provide. It helps strengthen the local economy by supporting downtown businesses. It uses businesses, city, city officers, it uses business owners, and it brings together a collaborative effort to create a unified vision or plan. And it often leads to public space improvement or even events that bring more people downtown. Where are DIDs used? DIDs exist in diverse setting. And again, remember, it's DID Downtown Improvement District. In urban downtowns, commercial corridors, tourism areas, historic districts, as well as suburban retail centers. What are DIDs not used for? And let's go back just a second and say, this is just information being shared. Again, it's not anything up for a vote. It's not making movement because we don't want everyone's emails to to go wild this evening. So this is just information. So we'll continue on with that. What are DIDs not used for? DIDs are not used to supplement or replace municipal services. DIDs have nothing to do for zoning or land use regulations. DIDs do not have any part of bridges, highways or large scale public work projects. And DIDs do not take over police or enforce laws directly, but we certainly can help with security if DIDs are put into place. How are DIDs established? Again, I think I just said that on this slide before. The City Council, of course, is responsible for a DID. It does take a period of time. It does have a lot of meetings, a lot of conversations. It does involve stakeholders and businesses downtown. And then the City Council then creates the DID and then it goes to a vote. So the City Council brings the DID to downtown. It's not Downtown Lynchburg Association. Again, we're just providing you information as we go through this presentation. Within the DID, it defines Within the DID, it defines the boundaries of what city council would like to see. It sets the increment tax rate of the businesses and the stakeholders within the downtown area. The DID is not a tax that is given throughout Lynchburg City. It's just the tax of the downtown area in which the city would then set the tax rate, of course. And then establishes the government structure of what you would like to see happen within the DID. Public engagement. Again, I think this is very important. Before a DID can be put into place, it does take a lot of conversation. It does take a lot of meetings with who are the stakeholders, who are the businesses, involves a lot of city officials. And again, we all know you can talk about it, you can promote it, you can advertise. And someone is going to say, I didn't know you were even talking about it. So it's always important, as you all are aware, to keep a great paper trail so that people know how often a DID was talked about if you all pursue to move forward with the DID. It does take some planning, it does take feasibility, and it allows the council to decide what is it that you want the DID to be used for? Based on the conversations of the stakeholders, you want them to feel comfortable about the tax rate that they're going to be taxed. And, and what are we going to use it for? And then, of course, stakeholder engagement, you want them to be a part of it. You want them to have a metric system where we're looking at performances and the DID should continue to evolve. So it's a lot of meetings, probably one and a half to two years to really get a DID established. But it's certainly not something that can just happen, certainly not before the end of this year, possibly not even before the end of next year. What activities does a DID fund? And I think this was a lot of conversation back in May when this was brought in. And so let's talk about what a DID can provide for the downtown area. Public space enhancements. And this is where a DID can help your public works. They can help with cleaning your sidewalks. They can help with removing snow and ice from a business that may be vacant. We can help replacing benches and adding your banners and adding lighting upgrades and adding the baskets with flowers. So it definitely can enhance what's already being done, but goes a little bit further and can assist with public works as far as wayfinding and navigation. Beautification and maintenance, again, street cleaning, waste removal. I know Tom and his office is really working on graffiti removal, making a plan for that. And so a DID can certainly provide some services for his business and with that a program that he's been already talking to you all about. And so that can be something that can also assist with that and enhance that. Seasonal decor and landscape, I think we all want it to be cleaner and safer and more beautiful. So this definitely can help, a DID can help with that. Bring more art, bring more, bring more murals downtown, excuse me. And then the facade improvement grants can definitely help with those. We all like seeing those facade improvements from lighting to paint to new signage, definitely can support those. Public experience and safety enhancements. Again, I just want to be very clear, a DID does not replace police, but it definitely can help. If you're doing more activities, more people are coming downtown. You want to have some funding for your off-duty police where you can have them be a part of it. So you want to provide some funding that can assist with having some extra security on the streets for the cleaner and safer areas. Again, lighting is a part of that. Definitely helps with homeless outreach and social services. And also ambassador program, which I think I've heard a lot about, not only since I've been here, but when I've been attending and reading things from the international downtown. The ambassador program is where everyone is identified, whether it be a T-shirt, a same color, whatever it might be. Ambassadors can be your point of resource of walking down saying, hey, where is this? Ambassadors are paying attention to what your streets look like. They're reporting, they're really there every day, and it allows for these people to be paid. They're not volunteers. They're a paid group of individuals that help do the cleaner, the safer, the welcoming people that are walking up and down the street. And they're the ones that can tell public works, tell the city, tell downtown, whatever it might be, the citizens first. What's going on and what needs to happen? So definitely ways that we can enhance safety downtown. Business support and marketing, I think we all know the amphitheater is coming. So a DID can help with festivals, markets, and concerts. Destination branding, it can help with digital and social media marketing, such as collaboration as far as advertising. Again, we want people to come downtown. We want to increase the foot traffic. When people come down, they spend the money. So we want them to come where everything is okay downtown. The lights are bright, restaurants are open, retail are coming. So we want to continue to bring people to the downtown area, and a DID can definitely support that. Economic development and growth, business retention and recruitment, filling those first floor businesses. Again, this allows the city and the DID to be the wingman to your economic development and tourism. They can work in partnership to continue to build that retail, continue to bring the workforce development, looking at your real estate and your development advocacy, and then the market research and data analysis. Because again, with the DID, you want their performance metric. You want to see if it's working. You want to see if what you wrote it for is definitely showing to the stakeholders, we've listened to you. And we want this to continue to evolve and make everyone satisfied with that extra DID tax. DID governments and public-private partnerships, most cities partner with a nonprofit. Congratulations, you all have had a nonprofit in Lynchburg for thirty years, working alongside the city. You all have made sure that you already had that nonprofit, which was Downtown Lynchburg Association. So you had it before you brought the DID in there. And you all should be very proud of that partnership and the things that you all have been able to do already. From the events to the festivals, to the first floor retail. You have been really busy with some of those, but a DID allows it to go even further. It allows to do more than what the city can do. It allows this nonprofit, Downtown Lynchburg Association, hopefully, to continue the conversation and work alongside the city to meet the goals that the city and the stakeholders want to see. How the partnership works, the city establishes the priorities for the DID, which we've established. The city selects the nonprofit to be the representative or the mouthpiece to help administer what you would all like to see happen. The nonprofit partners and engages with your stakeholders and implements the programs that everyone has agreed they'd like to see. And then the city ensures the DID funds are allocated properly. Again, it's a check and balance. You want to make sure that what you're asking for is being done through the nonprofit, through the DID. We want to keep stakeholders happy and engaged. Examples of DIDs in Virginia, you have Roanoke, you have Richmond, you have Stanton, you have Norfolk, and you have Winchester. So there's already some areas that surround us that are great examples of using the DIDs in Virginia. And maybe Councilman Missions, this is where you already have visited some of these and know some of these have already worked since you were looking into this. So definitely here are some additional ones that can be looked into. Measuring success and sustainability, I think to ensure the long impact. We want to make sure that the DID's performance is meeting the key metrics of how much foot traffic is coming in. Are we seeing business growth? Is crime reduction and safety prevention? Again, you're using ambassadors. We're bringing in with the DID off-duty police to help cleaner and safer. I think I like that word a lot. Property values increase. You're bringing the economic growth, makes people want to come downtown. If you saw last week, I believe it was the U S News, Lynchburg was number ten for places people want to retire. So again, congratulations, you guys, you're, you're bringing attention to our city already, which is allowing values to increase. And then we want stakeholder satisfaction. I think that's vital to any DID, no matter where you are. Renewing and adapting the DID, most DIDs operate on a multi-year, typically five years, and require renewal. It requires revisiting, it requires the metric system. You're looking at it, you're refining it, you're securing stakeholder support. And a well-managed DID evolves to meet the changing community needs. We know that there's changes. Changes happen every five years for ourselves, for our own homes, but also for our city and especially for our downtown. So I think we need to make sure if you all decide to create the DID that you're meeting the needs of what the changing needs are within this community. Area overview, and this is where I'm passing it to you, Greg.
All right, so let's talk about some of the numbers. So the first thing we have to understand about a DID is the boundary, the properties that are within that boundary. And then, you know, how do you generate revenue with the DID? So what we started with here is we just wanted to look at the boundary that is currently DLA's service area. And I think if we, when we get, when we get serious, we get serious about a DID, we want to have, we probably want to take a closer look at this. There's probably a couple of areas here that don't make sense to be included within a DID boundary. If you look, you know, assuming to the upper right-hand corner above Blackwater Creek Trail, there's, there's one property or Blackwater Creek there. There's one property that probably isn't a great fit. That's the U S pipe there. And then the lower right-hand corner of that shaded area, it's very much a residential area. It doesn't necessarily feel connected to downtown. So we want to take a look at that as well. But ultimately, just for illustrative purposes, we started with DLA's service area. What we find is there's about six hundred and seventy-five parcels, about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in taxable value, assessed value, and just over two hundred acres. And if we look at what those acres and what those parcels are made up of, and we did this by assessed value rather than by, you know, acreage or by a number of parcels. But of the assessed value, a little over eleven percent are single-family homes, single-family residences. About fourteen percent are multifamily residences, just shy of forty-two percent are commercial. One percent is industrial. And again, we want to talk about that further, I think. And then because there's a number of churches and government buildings in the downtown area, there's quite a, quite a large percent that is actually exempt from taxation, just over thirty-one percent.
You said two hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Looks like two hundred and seventy-five million. Yes, I misspoke there. A good catch for the audience out there. That's two hundred and seventy-five million in assessed value, not two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for catching that. So let's look at what that means from a revenue standpoint. And then who are the largest in terms of assessed value properties downtown? So the way a DID works is it would assess a incremental real estate tax rate on the properties within the boundary of the DID. So i- if, if you own a piece of property within the DID boundary, the citywide real estate tax rate is eighty-four cents, you would pay some rate larger than that. For the sake of argument, we're going to use ten cents because it's the number in the middle of the screen and it's very round. At ten cents, with the, the DID would generate about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year in annual revenue. And you can see there that what that would mean is properties within the Downtown Improvement District, instead of paying eighty-four cents, would pay a real estate tax rate of ninety-four cents. Now, all of that two hundred and seventy-five, roughly two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars would be reinvested in, in additional services in the downtown area for those property owners. And if we look at who would be most impacted here, you know, I won't go through this entire list. The Virginian Hotel is the highest assessed value. You know, at ten cents, you'd be looking at about twenty thousand dollars a year in revenue that would go, in, in tax that would go into the DID. Bluff Walk Center is Credit Terry Hotel, City Market Lofts are City Market Lofts. James View Investments is the Bank of the James Building, and then Lynchburg Grand Hotel, we know what that is. But that, that's how the numbers of the DID shake out. And of course, setting the appropriate incremental tax rate in, in the DID is, really comes down to what services do the downtown property owners, what are they looking for, right? So the more services that the downtown property owner would be looking for, the, the higher that incremental tax rate ultimately would need to be. And of course, if assessed values grow, so does the revenue that's coming into the DID. So that is the DID by the numbers, and I'll turn it back over to Stacy to wrap up this portion of the presentation.
So the unique considerations in Lynchburg. Again, DLA has existed for thirty years, providing many services that a DID would provide. And people have asked, well, why then do we need the DID? Well, the DID allows us to, of course, hire ambassadors, enhance the services that we can help with public works. We can help with Tom with graffiti removal. We can do the beautifications of downtown. So it allows us with the city to enhance the services that are already be providing. It pushes us a level forward and increase the cleaner and safer. The other thing for that is it's a good service for the downtown property owners, the stakeholders. It allows them to be a come apart of the footprint directly. They're getting to talk to the city officials and they're getting to work with you all on what it is that they want, their needs, and what they would like to see downtown. So it definitely creates that. And again, it does not replace city services, it just enhances them. It makes them grow a little bit more. So a couple of summary things I think that we all can walk away with it is city creates, it's definitely a city council creation. It does take a vote from you all. Ten cents is about the average when you're looking across the board at places that have a DID already involved. It clearly defines the roles. It defines the roles of what the city will do. It defines the information and roles of the stakeholders. And then it defines the roles of the nonprofit that will bring those DIDs and expand them even further. And it evolves over time. It takes what stakeholders want. It takes over what the city thinks is working, and it evolves it. Remember, we said about a five-year span, and then you can decide, is it working? Is it worth doing? Do we continue? Let's recreate it. And then as far as working with the nonprofits such as Downtown Lynchburg, it allows Downtown Lynchburg to facilitate what the city would like to provide. It allows, again, the mouthpiece. It allows us to be the person that is engaging with those stakeholders and working with those ambassadors and working with the things such as beautification, safety, and uplighting. And again, I think one of the things that I believe we all would like to see with any DID, or even being downtown or anywhere that we live, is definitely cleaner and safer. And that is something that we can definitely do by, by a DID because it enhances those services that everyone can work together on. So that's the end of the second part of the trifecta. Any questions that you would like for Chris, Greg, or myself to answer before we go on to the third part?
Mr. Missions. Thank you for that presentation.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Have you had an opportunity to check the polls with downtown business owners about this concept since you, it's been several months? So I, yeah, okay.
We have not.
Because I think that would be the most important aspect of this for me is, is if the downtown business owners want it, I think we should give it to them. If they don't want it, then we need to reevaluate. But one of the things that's a concern of mine is, you know, we've got the whole city that we've got to be looking at, and something you constantly hear about is why are taxes going up just to pour more money into downtown? And, and, and that's, you know, from the neighborhoods on the other side of the city. People that don't spend any time in downtown and really frankly don't want to.
Sure.
So the original thought process of this for me was if we're going to start expanding things downtown, that other neighborhoods aren't necessarily getting that same level of service, then we probably should figure out how to have downtown, downtown pay for itself. I love the concept of cleaner and safer. Having more police officers actually walking a beat down there on that standby hourly rate that they get for doing that kind of stuff. I'm sure they'd love it, they'd enjoy it. And I think business owners would love it. That to me is just a huge benefit. Something that, and it winter and Greg both brought up, and congrats because there was no fumbling on the whole, what does a DID do thing? Like the, you guys nailed it because that was the first presentation. It was, it was entertaining.
When I was asked to do the presentation, I said, what did I do? Like, then they said, during a presentation on the DID, I'm like, what did I do? Yeah.
So, so that but, but one of the things that was brought up was, uh, it's something that's, you know, we know about Lynchburg is downtown's on a hillside. Right? And that's a challenge for some people. And something that they had in Norfolk on Granby Street was, was the Fred, right? Which is, which is basically a golf cart, like a big golf cart that rides back and forth down the length of it. Yeah, and it, and it takes people around and, you know, if something like that increased accessibility for folks to be able to participate in downtown because they felt like, you know what? There is a way for me to get from Commerce Street. There is a way for me to get from Commerce Street to Clay Street, if that's where I end up having to park and, and be able to spend the day downtown.
That's great.
And, and it would make it more accessible for folks. But again, you know, that's something I would like to see downtown pay for itself rather than the rest of the city pay for it. So that's kind of where my head was wrapped around this thing when I asked about it. But again, getting the stakeholder, stakeholders behind it, that's your job. So welcome.
Will you promise me a leopard looking golf cart? Kind of a leopard one that's looking down?
Must have been all well-made. The, the import, the did itself has been discussed, has been talked about with downtown stakeholders. But it, the biggest question is what I get from my, what's my bang for my buck?
Absolutely.
And so that's, to your point, is the, the biggest element of all of this is if there are services to the degree that the general fund is what it is and that you have only but so many resources to collect trash all over 50 square miles. And but there's a heightened expectation for it to be cleaner, safer downtown. How can those pennies be leveraged to make sure that there's that, that frequency with which we expect from an area and how are they paying for it? So back to your point, it's absolutely a priesthood of all believers that we require and the stakeholders that are in here. It's, it's our collective opportunity to ask them, what, what are you looking for? And it was different in every place. And, and the quick example that I'll give in Norfolk, it went from helping ensure public service people get into cabs safely because they've been at bars most of the night. And that changed with Granby Street changing and it turned out to be many people dual income, no kids and lots of dogs. And so it was picking up poop. Like the poop from the dog. So it's, it all changes to what, what you're, so we'll, we'll see something in the beginning that back to Stacy's point of how it evolved. But I thought to say, if anything, you're spot on as far as making sure that there's an interest and the biggest question is, well, what do I, what, what do we get?
And I think cleaner, safer, brighter is something that everybody would welcome.
Absolutely.
Especially probably it's the brighter part because I've seen the list of lights that are out from time to time downtown and that's a challenge. So.
Yes.
Thank you.
Few years out is because of the meetings that will, that will have to take place.
Absolutely.
Leading up to with, you know, stakeholders downtown, the Blair Gottys and people that own these lists that was up there. To make sure, A, it's what they want, B, it's worth it and C, we can go through, hey, here are a list of things, menu items, if you will, that you can pick from, you know, whether it's ambassadors or golf carts or, you know, what, whatever those things are, and then they can decide as a, as a unit, the ones that are paying for it, that they, that's what, how they want to go forward, then we bring it to council. So we kind of have the buy-in on the front end.
Ms. Tilly.
I, some of it's reiterating, but first thank you so much for your emphasis on metrics and the need for that. And then especially the, the stakeholder engagement because those are the two big components for me on this, the success of this. Just briefly, I have lived in a did and I have lived just outside of a did in downtown San Diego. So Gaslamp was a downtown improvement district. East Village was that and you knew the difference. And it really was that cleaner, safer piece because there was private security or off-duty officers walking the gas lamp all the time. The lighting was impeccable and it was always clean. And you saw people out there cleaning non-stop. The dual income with dogs was a very real thing. And, and having that engagement within the community and that buy-in made a huge difference where you saw a huge difference going just over that line in the East Village. It, it really wasn't there. And so I'm very curious to see what the stakeholders think of this direction, but the cleaner, safer emphasis, all on board with that and all on board with the, the metrics component because that would be what would really drive it. So, thank you.
Ms. Reed?
It sounds like in the bigger cities, you know, like large, significantly larger cities than ours, maybe that's, it's a bigger buy-in. Maybe we're not, are we not there yet size-wise or, or?
Much smaller.
So what's, depending on the response of the?
Comparable cities that we'd like to go see as a, that's a whole other plan we have is Chattanooga, Tennessee, Greenville, South Carolina, even Chapel Hill has a did. I mean, there are several cities of comparable size and makeup that have implemented this recently. And we could field trip, if you will, and see what happens. But we're, we're not, we're not too big or too small to, to implement a do. There's much, cities much smaller and cities much bigger.
The smaller cities compared to our downtown, are there downtowns thriving more than ours are right now? Right. So that's, I, I think, I get, I get confused a little bit. I think we need to do a better job of explaining to our citizens the benefit of a successful downtown. And what we're trying to do with our downtown and why downtowns are great. Because I get so confused when I hear so many people have resentment towards downtown areas. We should be resentful of a, of a non-prospering downtown. We should be resentful of downtowns that have boarded up window spaces. That's what I get upset about. That's what we should be mad about, not about downtowns that are trying to succeed and that we're trying to get more businesses into. I get people not wanting their taxes to go up, but what we're trying to do is make our downtown what every successful downtown is doing. Because when you have more business and more people coming in from out of the area to spend money in your downtown, that drives the tax rate down. Doesn't bring it up. That is what we're trying to do here. We're trying to bring more businesses to reside in our downtown area. We're trying to get more businesses to pop up in all these empty storefronts that have been empty for so long. You know, we have businesses that are expanding down here, like actual businesses that are growing and then just the, you know, shops and restaurants and so forth. Like that's the goal. And, and so there shouldn't be any anger towards a location within the city of Lynchburg if it's going to bring prosperity. That's what started here. So I think it's just, we have great, great, great success on Ward's Road. We have great success in pockets of the city that down, any really great city has a great downtown. I've lived all over the country and all over the world and the ones that have yucky downtowns, you don't want to stay in. You'll want to leave because there's bad stuff that comes with that. You know, you talk to the people that lived here in the nineties. Here. So we don't want to go backwards, but we're an old city that has old city problems or we're trying to fix all that and that costs money unfortunately. Mayor Taylor knows.
Before, I know Mr. Deemer's asked about it before, is how does that equate to what we're already pouring in and expenditures into that area? Right? Because I'm pretty sure it's more than 3%. Right?
So that's, I think you got to keep in mind, there's a, it's a broader question, right? Because it's not just real estate tax revenue that you have to take into consideration when you, when you think about the calculus like that. It's, it's also your consumption taxes that, you know, just, especially with hotels and admissions tax are, are driven largely by downtown. Then you've got jobs and the ancillary jobs that exist because of it. So yes, there is a conversation we had there. I just think the math is pretty complicated and to really understand it, it would take, it would take quite a bit of research.
And I think it'd be good to understand for us to see where's the tax revenue come from in the city? And then where's the city government spending the tax revenue that, that we get from the citizens and the businesses and so forth? And I, it's just something that, that I recognize looking at this when, when I realized that it's, I expected it to be a lot more than 3% of the total, you know, real estate tax revenue coming out of downtown. It's actually shocked me a little bit, but it'd be great to get more information on that. And but then again, that's one of the reasons why I say, hey, look, I want to do these things, but I just don't want to burden the families in Richland Hills and Windsor Hills and Winhurst and other areas of the, of the city with putting more services into downtown if it's what the stakeholders want, right? And then those households paying for it instead of just having downtown pay for it. And that's kind of where I'm at. But thank you.
Okay. So we're ready for number three?
Moving on.
Trifecta. Thank you, Anna. Um, so I think it's important when you look at this picture, this is actually a picture of downtown Lynchburg. I know there was, when we selected this picture, it was like, is that downtown? Yes, it is. This is your downtown sunset view of our beautiful downtown footprint area. Downtown Lynchburg Association is pleased to speak to you all about the memorandum of understanding. We want to thank you again for allowing this organization to be a part of the city for 30 years. And as the executive director, I just want to tell each of you that I just want to come alongside you and come along the city to process and promote and bring all the things that you all have mentioned here this afternoon to downtown. That's why we moved downtown over 11 years ago. We love being downtown and I want to walk the walk and talk the talk. So this definitely is a way for myself to represent on behalf of the city, the Downtown Lynchburg Association. Here we go. The purpose and the action. Of course, one of the things that we would like to do is review the memorandum of understanding between the city of Lynchburg and the downtown association plan, association why? The MOU allows the DLA Downtown Lynchburg Association to implement its executive transition. That would be me. Explore establishing a downtown improvement district. And again, I think we explore it. I think we start talking about it. We start looking into it a little bit more and then continue to support and promote the businesses that are in the downtown Lynchburg area. There's been a lot that's happened downtown over the past few months with construction and we need to promote those businesses. We need to bring the foot to the traffic, shop small, shop local, and let's bring more people on date night to the downtown Lynchburg area. When you're looking at this picture, it is bright nights. So we're going to talk about that in just a second. It is going up as of we speak today. So if you've been anywhere near the bluff walk since last week, you're going to see that these were actually hung and finished today, but the bright nights are coming and we're going to talk about that. But again, we've said the 30 years together. So in 1995, Lynch's Landing was founded. We were able to find the Articles of Incorporation that go back to 1995. And 2006, Lynch's Landing joined with the Virginia Main Street accreditation in which downtown Lynchburg has the highest accreditation level. And a memorandum of understanding was formed with the Virginia Main Street and we're going to talk about that in, in the next slide over. In 2006, Lynch's Landing got the Grammy Award. So you all should be very proud. It got the Great American Main Street Award and that's not given out all the time. So Lynch's Landing received that Grammy in 2006 and it can be bragged about till kingdom come. It, it is a bragging right that you all got that award. In 2017, Lynch's Landing was changed to the Downtown Lynchburg Association. And I believe even in this room, we have a part of the Lynch's Landing founding person, someone that has been along with it. Anna, thank you for being a part of that Lynch's Landing. And then in 2025, new executive director, me, Stacy Garrett, your mouthpiece. And also we're celebrating the 30 years of supporting downtown revitalization. Now, looking at that slide, and I want you to really look at that picture because I'm going to talk about this just really heavily because I think it's bragging rights, again, not only for the Grammy, but the bragging rights for bright nights. Last year, I believe you all got the summary of the report of the bright nights. But I just want to point out 6,000 But I just want to point out 6,000 visitors came to bright nights. That was about 38% traveled from outside our footprint to come downtown. $929,000 were put into an economic impact. And on the bluff walk alone, the bluff walk during the bright nights, they saw a 14% increase. So your investment with the Downtown Lynchburg Association allowed us to put on this bright night event and brought that many people between November, whatever it was, maybe the 22nd, all the way through January, the 4th, bringing people along the bluff walk and it's in the process of doing the same. New, new lights are going to be out there, new different things. But I think when we look at the next slide, I want you to know that that much impact was brought to the city with only a 20% funded from city council. So that's a huge turnaround for you all and your investment. So let's look at the next slide. When we're looking at downtown Lynchburg's budget, the total budget for this year is 813,000. Between the grants, giving and events, downtown Lynchburg makes roughly about 642,000. City support is 171,000, which is your 21%. And in that city support, you have the executive director salary and benefits, which a part of the Virginia Main Street is a requirement, part of that MOU, which we'll talk about in just a minute. And then you allow us to have the space across the street in the Monument Terrace Building, about 38,000. Event support through economic development, through the public works, through security. You give us about 19,000 in city support and then you provide us graciously staff parking up at the Clay Street Parking Deck. So in total, the city support for DLA is about 21%. So when you're looking at one event is bringing 6,000 people, increasing bluff walk sales 14% and bringing 929,000 to your economic development. Good job, city council. You all are making a huge impact in bringing the people downtown and that's a huge success. And that's just one event. There are many other events that DLA does for downtown that you all support and allow us to bring downtown. Now, we have three agreements that DLA represents the city. One, of course, is the Virginia Main Street, which again started in 2006 and that's a three-party agreement, which we'll look at. The second one is the lease agreement with the building across the street, the Monument Terrace Building. And then the third thing, of course, is what we're talking about in this trifecta moment is a memorandum of understanding, which we will look at in a few slides from now. The Virginia Main Street is a three-party agreement and a lot of the funding we get, if you look at that, about 562,000 of grants have been given since 2014. A lot of it came out through COVID, which we saw a lot of money coming through COVID at that time. 290,000 of that brought Launch Lynchburg, adding 15 businesses to downtown between 2022 and 2025. That's a lot. So that money allowed us to have with the city as well, with entrepreneurs, the, the 15 new businesses. Now, when you're looking at the agreement between the Virginia Main Street, which is a division of the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, Main Street defines, is defined by the Virginia Main Street. And there are requirements that, that I have to make sure we're meeting those requirements. I have to send in reports. We have to make sure that we're following what it does. And it's, it's, once you have it, you, you make sure you're following these requirements, but if you lose it, it's very hard to get back. So some of the things that Virginia Main Street requires is that we are an independent 501(c)(3) organization with an active volunteer board of directors. You employ a full-time executive director, which the city does within that 21%. Active particip-, active partnership with the local government, which we have with you all and that we maintain accreditation as a national Main Street community. And again, I'll point out downtown Lynchburg Association has the highest level of accreditation. So from all, from all the years, that is quite the accomplishment with the Virginia Main Street. The lease agreement in the Monument Terrace Building, you all allow us a nice office space. Has a beautiful view on Friday afternoons when they are outside at Monument Terrace. So I thank you for my window view there, but it is a nice space for us to welcome visitors. Being a city employee, it has allowed me to slip across the street for city meetings and then go back across. So I do appreciate the proximity there. The city also, you all provide us utilities and maintenance. That's always thankful and gracious. And then when, my understanding is when DLA moved into that building, there were some upgrades that the Downtown Lynchburg Association took upon themselves and they made some interior improvements from some paint to some furnishings and different things to make it more of an office space and welcoming to, to anyone, including stakeholders that enter those doors. And of course, the third topic in which we're talking about, the third agreement that we have is the memorandum of understanding. This is the agreement with the city of Lynchburg. And some of the items that are required within that memorandum is collaborate with the master plan, employ a full-time executive director, work on projects related to economic vitality and sustainability, provide in-kind parking to staff, provide access to IT. I can't even tell you all the emails that come in and out of my office every day. Provide information of plans, city activities, initiatives and policies. This current MOU does expire on December 31st of this year. This is why we're bringing it to you this afternoon. It typically renews for three years and it is, it is dependent on you all fully funding the 21% of our budget, which includes, of course, my position in order to make the requirement for the Virginia Main Street, but also allows downtown Lynchburg to be your, your person that is representing the city with stakeholders activities and events. Planning and next steps, this is where I'm going to throw out a little bit of a, of a trifecta. So I'm going to go backwards though. So I'm going to go, that's why I started a trifecta with me, the dead, the MOU. So now I'm going to go backwards. So the first thing of the trifecta is renew the MOU agreement with DLA for the three-year standard term. Establish, because we've talked a lot about a dead, allow DLA again to promote and process the downtown improvement plan with you. And I've kind of given it a title and we can change it. It's just kind of where I'm thinking about how we can start looking into the dead is establish a mayor's committee for a stronger downtown consisting of members of city council, downtown stakeholders, members of the downtown Lynchburg Board, including myself, and then some city staff. And I think that's important because we want to include all of those pieces as you all start to talk about, discuss, create and decide if you want to move forward with a debt. And then we visit and study and benchmark successful downtowns, not only in Virginia, but neighboring states. And Chris kind of opened the can of worms. I've already been in contact with Chattanooga, Tennessee, and I've already been in contact with Greenville, South Carolina, and they welcome all of us coming there to talk to them about how they have been able to implement a debt with their nonprofit involving their stakeholders and making it cleaner and safer, building the economic development, making public spaces more welcoming and engaging the community. And then it also allows us to develop the recommendations for services, amenities, initiatives and the funding models to strengthen the downtown Lynchburg area. Now, the final of this trifecta is how we began, which is me. And I am new and I have been a person that operated a business in Lynchburg for over 20 years. And now I've lived downtown for over 11 years. And, and now I'm here in front of you saying, I want to be the person that represents the success that you all have already had for 30 years. I see a lot of great things that we can implement. I live here. I walk to work every day. I walk home for lunch. I am visible and I want to be your community leader. I want to work with those stakeholders. I want to represent all the businesses, not just the Launch Lynchburg ones. I've been walking in and out of businesses from day one, introducing myself. I want them to know who I am, what downtown Lynchburg can do and what the city would like for us to do in that representation. As we start talking about the dead, if that's where we want to move, but if not, how we can bring those people downtown and how we can make it a place where people leave here. People come to a city and they visit their downtown and they don't know why. It's just part of when you go visit, you go check it out and you see what's there. And we want when people leave here, they're posting on their social media why they're here, why they think people should come and why they need to spend their money in our stores and in our businesses and live in these beautiful lofts and buildings that we have downtown. So the one thing that I will say as I wrap this up is downtown, everything's waiting for you. And on that, thank you for allowing me to be here with you all tonight. Thank you for allowing us to present all of these slides. I know it was a lot, but I think it's very important and the trifecta always wins.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Wild.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I know you brought me last month. So I was one of the residents downtown. That was very helpful to hear what your plans are, your ideas are. I was really excited about it. So thank you for that, for meeting with the residents and the business owners, stakeholders for already getting you really on the ground about, on the ground running and just getting some buy-in about what you're doing and how you can really help downtown. So I really appreciate that. And one thing you talk about is just that, talk about the quality of life. You know, sometimes people that live downtown, somebody that always come downtown. But again, the quality of life is so important for all parts of our community. That's why you want to come to it downtown. Where you want to have a vibrant downtown because it's just that, it's just the tax base, the hotel base, the rental income, the, the, the hotels, the restaurants, that affects the whole city, whether you live downtown or not. So we got to make sure we can continue to keep that picture forward about the quality of life. Like I mentioned earlier, I don't walk the trails. Again, I probably have a stroke. But again, it's important for us to have those because some people walk the trails. Some people like the trails. Some people love those trails, but again, it's a part of, a part of being a community that all of us appreciate and love. And also last point, Mr. Chris Bowwell, thank you for all the work you do to our community with the must-ask for kids. I was in, was at Tennessee on Wednesday. I missed the event, but I did get registered. So thank you for what you're doing in our community, raising 600 plus thousand dollars for all of our kids, not just kids in war two or war three, but for all of our kids in our region. And that's what's, that's why I love that community part because it helps all of us work and live and grow together. Being a Christian, that's what we should do, live and work together and love everybody, whether you live in any kind of ward you live in, regardless of your color, regardless of what your sexual orientation is, because we're a community and we love everyone. So thank you for all the work you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Do have a couple of questions. I know we, I want to, some of this information, we had a brief on the DLA, I think last, but when we're talking about downtown and in, from your standpoint, are we only talking about war two downtown? Right? So.
It's considered the DLA boundary.
Okay, okay. So when we're, when, when you're pulling some information, I think some of what Mr. Missions was, was asking you for, can you, and you may have this information too, but if you could get it presented for me. Uh, I would like to know the number of residents, annual tourists, the number of businesses that are headquartered downtown. If we potentially know how many jobs then come out of downtown? And if there's a way to know how many those employed downtown live in wards outside of downtown? Or Lynchburg residents that like work downtown but live in wards one, two and three, or one, three and four? And maybe the average salary that the businesses that are headquartered out downtown. Hey. Thank you. And thank you. Great presentation, Stacy, for being brand new. You know a lot. You've learned a lot. Well done.
Mr. Missions.
That, that's all great. I'm looking forward to that information. If we could also just include, how many of those employees downtown don't even live in the city? Right? Because I'm sure it's substantial. So. But no, this, this was good. As far as the, the MOU goes, when I, can we back up a couple of slides? Right there. So when you look at this agreement, you see employ full-time executive director, providing kind parking to staff, provide access to IT, right? Then we've also got the in-kind office space, utilities and maintenance, office improvements, I guess that the city's done.
Yeah, we did the office improvement.
You guys did the office improvements. So while the pay for you is 21% of DLA's budget, I think you've got to encompass what is the total value of the public support for everything that's going into DLA? It's not just the salary. And the reason, and the reason for that is, one thing we need to determine, because I've received feedback from constituents on this, is what communications of the DLA are subject to the Freedom of Information Act? Because if you hit a certain threshold in public support and that could include the in-kind, then all of the associations, communications, I believe are subject to the Freedom of Information Act. And we need to make sure we're complying with that. But I find, I would find it hard pressed to believe that you, as technically a city employee on the books, your communications are probably subject to Freedom of Information Act. Because I know, and I've heard back from constituents that put in requests for information under the previous executive director and were flat out blanket denied and told they weren't getting anything. So I want to make sure between the city and between the DLA, that we're archiving the things that we're supposed to archive and that we've got those records available should citizens ask.
But just to clarify, her salary plus benefits, plus rent, in-kind rent, plus parking, plus all the things adds up to 21%. Okay. That all of those things are included in the $170,000 number on the screen out of the $812,000, $813,000 budget. So it does include those things.
But it doesn't take away the fact that she's technically a miniature employee. So we got to figure out what that looks like and what that is because I've heard from several constituents that have tried to get information via Freedom of Information Act regarding communications, I believe, from the previous executive director. And it was flat out denied by DLA. If you're a city employee or taxpayer-funded employee, we got to figure out what's the, how do we comply there? Because the citizens do deserve to have access to those records if they are.
I just wonder if there is a difference because downtown Lynchburg is the nonprofit. So definitely if you'll give me a chance to, to look into that, I'd be glad to let you know the correct answer on.
So out of two, city, if, if, if we're giving you access to IT and it's city IT systems, I mean, that's their game. City owns everything that goes across those IT systems.
Okay.
So, you know, that's just something to consider, something to think about. We just need to make sure we're compliant with that.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
And I think it's important to note, if anyone is making Freedom of Information Act request of the city, it should come through the city's Freedom of Information Act office rather than to DLA, which creates, could create some complications there.
Sure. But we just need to make sure that that, there's an understanding and maybe that is a piece that would get included in the MOU. Right? Is that the DLA is subject to compliance with FOIA? That would be something that I think that would be.
Right. Be glad.
Fantastic, because that would totally clear up all of that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your hard work. Yes, ma'am.
He's picking up trash.
And it's, and it's uphill and downhill too.
Because I'm in Sterling, his person, and he is actually going to help make us some ambassadors to help with some of that too. So, uh, so we're glad, glad that you involved me in that conversation. So thank you very much for that. And again, my pleasure and I look forward to working alongside each of you as we start this process and move forward. So thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number three, Lynchburg Redevelopment Housing Authority Review, Review Bond Assurance for 1300 Campbell Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. So two weeks ago, considered allowing the Lynchburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority to issue bonds for the redevelopment of 1300 Campbell Avenue. It's commonly around here known as the Barker Jennings Building. You tabled that meeting or that item to this meeting, which you, that allowed staff additional time to do research. It also allowed us to request additional information from the developer. All that information we received is now in your packet. Things from financial standing all the way up to past projects. So my colleague, Tom Martin, is going to do kind of a brief re-overview of the project. We also have with us Mr. Herschel Keller with Lynchburg Redevelopment and Housing Authority for any questions you have. Unfortunately, the partner with Astoria has been unexpectedly delayed. He will.
He will be here this evening, so any questions that we are unable to answer before, you will, he will have an audience before you this evening to, to answer this. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Martin.
Sure. So again, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Just giving you a brief overview again of what we discussed on October the 28th. The purpose of why we're here is that Astoria Housing has requested Lynchburg Redevelopment Housing Authority to issue 30 million in revenue bonds. And the state code requires that City Council, in addition to the Housing Authority, approve the transaction. So the former Barker Jennings Building, we know was constructed in 1919. Oddly enough, originally as a dormitory for the jobbers overall company. It was used as Barker Jennings up until about 2009, when it became vacant. And since that time, there's been several proposals to convert it back to its residential use. However, none have really moved to fruition. So we'd be excited to see some new breath breathed in, into this building. It's currently zoned to be for urban commercial. So just a little bit about what they're proposing. They're proposing to renovate it into 120 to 125 workforce housing units. And they're adhering to that 60 to 80% of AMI. Would have a mixture of studio renting for $930, one bedroom and two bedrooms, up to $1,095. So we know that they're proposing full-time general manager. They're proposing to have security personnel on site. They're proposing to have all types of amenities from Wi-Fi to playgrounds. And the property, the, the big thing, I think, and I'll probably mispronounce it again, but SL NOSPA, does it? Awesome, will be managing these properties, and they really have a good track record in managing from what we can see. And they, they manage over 29,000 units between Virginia, Maryland, and DC, and down into the Carolinas. So with that, again, the, the Housing Authority Board has approved the issuance of the bonds. There's absolutely no financial obligation to either the Housing Authority or the city. The Housing Authority would receive that 1% administrative fee, which is $300,000, not $30,000. And the project would meet the requirements of a qualified residential rental unit. Understandably, council had some questions. So we invited Mr. Herschel, who represents the Housing Authority. He can talk with you more about the bonds and the vetting process that the Housing Authority went through. And hopefully, Mr. Hall will be able to answer any questions that you have about Astoria this, this evening. I, I think one of the things that council had a little bit of pause about on Astoria is that they only had projects in, in progress. They hadn't finished any. And from our conversations with them is that amongst their partners, and it's very hard to see on this screen, but they have many projects between them, and it's not uncommon for groups of different individuals to come together and form limited liability companies, or whatever they're forming, to do these additional projects. He can most definitely talk with you more about that. Unfortunately, again, he was delayed. But with that, I'm going to invite Mr. Keller up, and he can talk with you more about the housing authority process.
Hey, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor, Deemer, Herschel Keller. Authority. First of all, let me apologize for not peeing the coat and tie. No disrespect to you all. I, my day did not unfold as I expected today, so I'm here a little bit more casual than I would have liked.
Sir, I show up sometimes in construction boots.
There you go. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have about this is, uh, this is a housing revenue bond issued by the Housing Authority. It is conduit financing. The authority acts as a conduit lender. They have no liability for the principal or interest in the bonds, nor does the local governing body, the city, the city of Lynchburg. And the authority did vet these, did vet the developer. The, the authority, I would say, has processes for vetting projects in which it's involved, depending on the degree of risk that the authority would face. Tax-exempt housing revenue bonds being the least risky of projects that the authority considers. Because they, you know, they, they make it, they make an investment in these, these bond proceeds, but it's really, the way the transactions operate, in this case, Primco is going to off-take those bonds and then loan money back to the developer. It allows Primco the ability to not pay taxes on the interest that would otherwise be paid by the developer on that money. So it's a, it's a way to, to have more tax advantageous financing or portion of the capital stack for the project. So these projects, the Housing Authority would see as relatively low risk. Now, if we are going to, or let's say we, if the Housing Authority is going to invest its own money, is being involved in a tax credit deal, or they would issue project-based vouchers to developer, there'd be a much more strenuous vetting process. But here, the developers already run the gauntlet of going to get the tax credits from the Virginia Department of Housing, which is a very strenuous competitive process. There are lots of people competing for those tax credits. So we're, we're generally comfortable when a, when a developer comes to us, having already been down the road of seeking tax credit, low-income tax credit approval. In addition to that, they have tax credit issued here because the location of the building is proximity to the railroad station. They've already, they've already run a gauntlet of governmental approval processes. And given that combined with the low risk of the, of the project to the Housing Authority in the city, the project is vetted, staff reviews a proposal, the Authority Board considered it. They got opined on the, the, the aspect of these, you know, the, the non-committal nature of this financing. And so there, there has been a process. Couple of things, and also, the, the, the developer is, once the local involvement, it helps them achieve higher scoring in their competitive credit application process. But it also, they're able to go get these bonds elsewhere. They go to the, directly to the Department of Housing and get these bonds. If we don't issue them, the Department of Housing, if they're going to issue them tax credits, would likely issue the bonds. And what that would do is allow the project to move forward, but there'd be no Housing Authority involvement, and the Housing Authority would not receive the $300,000 non-federal funds fee. The Authority is actually a distinct political subdivision of the Commonwealth, just like the city is. The, this, this group elects its board, but they are separate, just like the city is separate from the state. And they're 90, 90-some-plus percent funded by the federal government. And so anytime we can get, anytime the Authority can get non-federal funds that it can use for local projects to leverage to benefit the city, that, that's always a good thing that we look for. I don't know if that's, that, that's a general overview of, of how the process works. You got questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Mr. Deemer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Guiding this organization through the state process is usually an, an organization, a law firm. I had heard McGuire Woods was the one who helped them do that, and they, they've got a reputation, so is that, is that information correct?
It is. Michael Graff is bond counsel on this transaction. So he's, he will, he will issue the opinion that these bonds are tax exempt. Between you and me, Michael's a good guy. He's a reputable person. Michael's not going to take a fly-by-night client, and we feel good about Michael. And Mary Mayrose, who's the executive director of the Authority, is, is a very reputable player in the low-income housing industry, for lack of a better term, in America. She's served on some of the national boards of their associations. And she's familiar with some of the members of Astoria, as, as Mr. Martin mentioned. It's not, it's not uncommon for these developers to come together, although they have significant experience individually, coming together and form a special-purpose entity to develop a project or two and then move on. So the fact that Astoria did not have its own significant development experience was not a concern to us, because we know the players did.
And when you look at this, this is my last question. You look at the list of ongoing projects that you saw, which is supposed to make us feel more comfortable that there's a lot of this going on. Do you feel anything like I feel like, well, that's a lot of balls in the air right now? That are they capable of handling and the, the capacity of dealing with all those projects simultaneously while doing Lynchburg?
You know, Vice Mayor Deemer, I'm not at all equipped to answer that question. You know, it's, it's, the Housing Authority under this scenario is like a bank. It's as if, you know, not even, because Bank of America, they were involved in the transaction, their money would be at risk. Here, neither the Authority nor the money, the, the city's money is at risk. So we have very little control over what happens with the project. But if, if, and the capital stack on this project is really interesting. I mean, the way they, the way they have developed their tax credit layering on top of the tax-exempt bonds, if construction is completed, if they're successful, and they may not be, but I would hope they would be, they're left with a very valuable project, a 50-plus-million-dollar project with $10 million in debt. So it, it, we saw it as a project that should work. Now, we've invested in other projects, or we've allowed investment by non-tax-exempt funding that have worked over time or have worked after, for example, the hotel on Main Street. That was funded by the Housing Authority tax-exempt bond. It took several bankruptcies to strip away the various debt structures to get that project to a cash flow, but it's now an asset for the city. And that, you know, the, this council may not know, but the Authority's been involved in funding, the financing of the federal courthouse, the post office, the Human Services Building, you know, 19 Commerce Street. At least, they've, they've got a track record of being successful when it comes to public finance and to, to invest in the city of Lynchburg.
Thank you.
Welcome. And I'm sorry that Mr. Mark Paul could not be here. I think, I think there's some confusion about the time. He was, he, he's, he's en route to be here spot on at seven o'clock, which was apparently three hours late.
Mr. Mission.
Thank you all for the presentation. Tom, you as well. I got one question, and that question's for the city manager. Are you good? That's all I need.
Good. Thank you all. Nice to see you.
Thank you, sir. Oh, the, Mr. Tim.
I'm sorry.
Session, and it was, it's really resourceful. I've been in discussions with Kent and Winter this week, and have been doing my own due diligence and really appreciate y'all's work on this. Thank you. No, that's great. Thank, you're great. Thank you.
We're going to approve the project and have it vetted through the board. I tried to assure them that the vetting process had been done completely with the, with the, with the House Authority Board that we had appointed. I tried to make sure, just so you know, I did try to stress that point. But so it's my part as a board member for the House Authority, and the city council representative, I tried to do my part to assure them. But again, thank you for coming in today. I appreciate it.
I watched it on YouTube. You did a nice job.
Thank, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I have number four, Lynchburg City Council. Rules and procedure discussion. Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
And I also see that Councilman Feraldi isn't here. You know, certainly I'm happy to proceed on, but I do see that there's a roll call item. And if you all want to proceed next time with rules or to go on, go on through, what, what would you all like to do?
We can wait on the rules. Ms. Timmer.
I, I think it should be a matter of consensus or vote, but I'm just wondering if we rolled this into a retreat at the beginning. If, you know, because this has been kind of an ongoing thing, and it's getting piecemeal and separated out. If we just incorporate this as, as part of our retreat and pull our teeth and get it done at the first of the year, and. Yeah. Yeah.
It's going to destroy.
Consent. Mr. Manager.
So we, we have a calendar that's set, right? It's the second and fourth Tuesday. Are, are we amenable to, and, and I'd work together with, with you about a, a day that would work as far as a separate day for retreat, because we usually do that. We look at like a Thursday or a Friday, or whatever works for people's calendars. Are we, are we amenable to that? So it is a separate day, and, and if it is pulling teeth, I'm going to come to that part, because I'd really like mine, so. We good, but just, I'll find a day, make sure, and I'll work through Alicia to make sure that it works for everyone. But having it as a separate day than the Tuesday, and it be a standalone, is that cool?
Vice groups, so it's quicker.
Let me get some consensus. Yes, yes, yes. Madam Clerk. Moving on to roll call. Mr. Feraldi is not here. Ms. Reed.
Do you want to start with the, I'm okay with starting with the Vice Mayor's item, since it's an actual
Mr. Dean.
Presentation?
Yes.
Is that okay? And then we can go to the.
Hopefully, if I get. If that's okay.
Mr. Dean.
I don't know. Thing, that's fine with me.
Appreciate it. Ms. Reed, thank you for your. I'll just basically kind of read my comments. I had some concerns, and I just wanted to raise what I think are a few serious concerns regarding the preparation, approval, and overall treatment of our city council meeting minutes. First, we've experienced long and recurring delays, sometimes weeks or even months before receiving draft minutes for our review. In several cases, we've been asked to approve minutes for multiple meetings at once, long after the events occurred. I, I don't think that's acceptable in terms of our transparency, accuracy, public accountability, efficiency, which I hear Councilman Feraldi mentioning a lot of times. I've been a secretary for a lot of different organizations throughout my life. And in general, almost without exception, most of the time, the minutes from the previous meeting are distributed before the next meeting and reviewed, and then voted on. Sometimes it's usually the first item of business on old business based on Robert's Rules of Procedure. So that's what I'm used to. I know that's, doesn't have any holding on us as a council, and we can do what we want. But in general, I find that sort of process lets us review them while we can still remember them. And as one of the older members of city counseling, maybe you can relate a little bit. Sometimes remembering things that happened a long time ago is not as easy for me as, as most. And to go back and try to review them is problematic for me. And I love to be able to address them while they're still pretty fresh in my memory. I think that's good, good process, good public policy, good governance. Second, I remain troubled by what appears to be the improper influence by the city attorney over what content was included or excluded from our past minutes. I'm not trying to rehash old stuff. I'm talking about the future. I want to look forward, and I want to know how we're going to deal with such situations. The use of an undefined quote-unquote germane is filtered to remove or reject important council member commentary, particularly when that commentary addresses the city attorney themselves, own legal advice is a serious procedural concern for me. Let me be really clear. These are city councils' minutes. They're not staff minutes. They are the legal and historical record of our deliberations. They're not supposed to be a curative narrative. Every member of this body has the right to be reflected in that record of the minutes, whether or not the majority agrees with their position or not. Robert's Rules of Order and our council rules of procedure both protect the right of the minority to be heard, and our minutes should also not be used to silence the minority's vote and voice. I'm also concerned by reports that some, some of my colleagues maybe don't read the minutes before approving them. I think we all should fully read our minutes. Maybe I'm just a new guy, but that seems like good due diligence on my part, and I would hope all of us would do that. That's something that should concern all of us. If we are merely rubber-stamping minutes without review, we are surrendering control of our own record to staff discretion, when again, they're our minutes. And finally, a word of caution. Today, you may be in the majority, and you, but tomorrow, you may not be in the majority. And if we normalize using the minutes to erase dissenting viewpoints, we are laying the groundwork for our own future silencing. So the integrity of the record must be preserved, not just for accuracy, but for fairness, for transparency, and for the trust placed in us by the public. So I don't have any specific proposals. It's probably more appropriate to talk about it in the rules if we're going to do that at the retreat. If we're going to, I would defer to my colleagues if they have any interest in, in setting forward some, some set policy on how we do this going forward, because it was such a point of contention. I didn't understand why it ever was a point of contention. I honestly thought all our reviews would be accepted without any controversy at all. There are votes that we took that aren't in our minutes, and that is the number one thing the minutes should include. So, you know, I just hope that we will be respectful of our colleagues. And even if just one of us saw something in the meeting that was important to them and feels the need to bring it up and have it included in the minutes, I would hope that we would defer to our colleague and allow that to go into the minutes without a whole lot of debate or discussion. It's not about politically covering ourselves or whatever. It's about what we think's important, and it's our minutes. So, again, so that's, that's my two seconds, and I appreciate the indulgence of my colleagues.
Ms. Reed.
First, I'd like to, just again, I know we're a day late because we were here yesterday, but thank all of our veterans for their service as a veteran spouse. And my grandfather was a World War II veteran. He passed away a, a year ago on November 1st. Then we buried him a year ago yesterday on Veterans Day, which was such a neat way to honor him. So thank you to everyone who served. So it's hard to believe it's been three years that I've been on council. We've been. We've been, three of us have been on council. It's like time has crept by and then flown by at the same time. I was raised. And I'm sure there's going to be people that roll their eyes when I say this, but whatever. To be to be kind to people as best as you can and when you're not, you know, try to make it right. And, you know, we all fall short. I had a job one time at a news station where I had a horrible boss. And I was I hated coming to work, but I had to come to work. And he was so mean and he scared me to death, but I needed my job. And I didn't know what a toxic work environment was at that age because I was so young. But I know now. And we were all terrified of this man. And people would cry. And people hated their jobs and it was a horrible place to be. And I would have a stomach ache every time I had to go talk to him and I could not wait to get home. And I was so glad when I got another job. And I hated watching him talk to other people and I would almost rather me have to talk to him than watching him talk to other people because I knew how they felt because he was so horrible. And that was a time in the nineties when HR only existed to kind of tell you what your health benefits were. They didn't have the job that they have now. So you didn't go and say, hey, I'm being treated poorly by my boss and they didn't have the protective layer that they have now. So you were kind of stuck either quitting your job or sucking it up. And so we all just sucked it up or people did quit. So over the last three years in this job, for those of you who don't know, our appointed employees don't report to our HR department. We, the council are their HR department. And when they have concerns or complaints, the seven of us are their bosses. We are that protective layer for them. And over the last three years, I have seen them be mistreated. And I have voiced my concerns about that in front of the public. I have voiced my concerns about that in countless emails. I have asked, told and pled with my colleagues to stop. And to be nice. And it hasn't gotten better. I've seen city staff quit. I have heard from employees how they don't like their jobs. We've heard from our employees how they don't enjoy coming from to work. And this is and has become a hostile work environment. It is our job to protect people who are being treated unfairly. While we can expect people who work for us to do their job and to do it according to their job description. It is not okay to be abusive. It is not okay to be tyrannical. It is not okay to order people around. That is not okay. And one of us does not get to tell anybody what to do. We are seven. We're seven. So when we have emails threatening people with legal action, accusing people, defaming people. We've seen it happen live at meetings. And they haven't been allowed to defend themselves. We've read news articles recently saying things like a day of reckoning is coming for the Democrats that work for the city and the rhinos on council. What does that mean? So there's threatening language woven in articles and emails, texts that can be foiled. How are we expecting people to do their jobs? How are we expecting people to want to come to work? And all kinds of misleading things being said about them, about their job performance. And we're letting it happen. We're letting it happen. So what I would like you to do, Mr. Friedman, is put together some options that we can look at that can help protect in this case, our appointed employees from this behavior. I'd like to see some options because as the HR department that that should be able to protect the appointed from abusive behavior and hostile behavior. I don't know what else we can do. Because asking and begging and pleading hasn't worked. So I would like to see. Is it legal options? Is is it an ordinance? Is it? I don't know. What what can we do? I want to see what we can do. Is it not not making the appointed have to communicate with certain people? Can they have other options? I'd like to know what methods we have to look at in protecting you so that we can retain good employees. But also not make you or them have to endure treatment. Because I think you should be able to have other options. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Wilder.
Yes, I want to thank the staff for all the work in our community for protecting our city and working for our city. We appreciate your service. Thank you so much. Also want to thank all of our veterans and yesterday with Veterans Day, my son is in the Marine Reserves. He went to every restaurant in the city. It's amazing that he is still standing. But thank you to all of our community coming together to support our veterans, which what we are, we are caring community that really cares for our veterans and care for others. So I appreciate that. And I did mention in the PDC meeting earlier about the shootings on White Rock. I asked them to continue to look into that. We've had some challenges on that same corridor for that grocery store there. There's been a seven residents have contacted us maybe about that myself. I was a mayor Taylor. I was over the several years, over the years. So again, it's another situation there again. So I just I mentioned at PDC meeting, so I asked them to contact the police to see what we can do to address the concerns of our residents. I mean, could have been a child out there to get the shot. So we want to make sure that we continue to address those areas like those hotspots in front of that store. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ms. Timmer.
Kind of piggybacking PDC. We've been talking about it, but I'm just letting people know because I'm getting the emails, dear and the appraisals. And I appreciate the ongoing conversations and research and the back and forth we've been having on that. The the task force team that's coming together, that's all great. I do just want to piggyback something. Was was not expecting all of this, but Mr. Deemer, I appreciate the tone and the humility in which you presented your comments today. You put something before council, the whole body. You didn't force it on anyone and you shared your thoughts openly and honestly. And all of which have merit and I think it's there are two conversations that are taking place. There's one about treatment of city staff, but there's one about the issues of minutes, of records, of legal advice and certain technicalities that are extremely important to the functioning of this body. And often that discussion gets swallowed up by another conversation and we need to be able to quite possibly have both. But they are not the same conversation. And so it's just very important that as we operate as a body that we keep those distinct. I know that there have been times where I have put forward comments talking about the dedication of city staff. And then it has been construed as well, attacking city staff. And the point being made is the need for accuracy, not the attack on an individual person. And so conflating those discussions is not helpful to what this body needs to do. So thank you so much. Happy Veterans Day. Very grateful to our vets, very grateful to Ms. Reed's husband, my husband, to your son, Dr. Wilder. I didn't know that, but we always enjoy going out on Veterans Day and and the the blessing of that. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things. Trying to figure out which order I want to start in on this. So elections have consequences. We had election in Virginia recently that I think is going to have some consequences. We need to be thinking about proactively. One is and and consider this my roll call item for this to ask to have it added to a future work session agenda. I want to look at getting proactive on zoning for recreational marijuana sales. Should Virginia decide to legalize recreational sales of marijuana? I do not want that to sneak up on every street corner like a like the vape shops did on us. And and I think that's something we should look into. I think that's something that we can go ahead and define now and and get a zoning ordinance in place should that become legal. Second thing, I've noticed that there is a Hillcats branded sign that says no weapons allowed when you're entering city stadium. We probably need to get that taken down because that's not compliant with our Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution. So I don't know if they're familiar with that, but we just need to because because what's going to what happens with that is you end up in a situation, I think, where you have lawful concealed carry holders that see that sign, then they get freaked out that they might be violating some kind of law that they're actually not violating. And then they go back and then they put their firearm in their car unattended. We don't want that. I would I would think that we don't want that to be a situation where we have a bunch of unattended firearms in cars because people see that sign and they they think that that's you know, some sort of legal mandate that they that they have to comply with. But with that, keep in mind also when Lynchburg City Schools is using that for football games at city stadium, that is a school function and it's just the same as a school. Right? So so the same laws that apply to school grounds apply when Lynchburg City Schools is using it for a football game. Which takes me into the next thing. I had a great time on Friday night going to the Heritage Game at JF. Congrats to Heritage pioneers for taking number one seed all the way through the playoffs. So that's exciting. We're going to get some use out of city stadium here for the next couple of Friday nights because they've got home field advantage all the way through. And we've also got EC glass in the, I believe, I think it's class four. They're in a different class with JF. So I think EC glass is going to be playing JF in the first round. And LCA also made the I think class three the same as Heritage. So they're also in the playoff bracket, but they didn't get number one like Heritage did. So great to see all of our Lynchburg City High Schools participate in the playoff round and great to see Heritage right there on top. So congrats to the players and and Coach Bradley and let's let's send Western Arbor all home on Friday with their heads down. I don't mind saying it. And appreciate the work they're doing and look forward to seeing them keep winning all the way through the season because I think it's time to have Heritage bring us home another state title. So let's let's make that happen. So congratulations to all them on the hard work they've put in. They've got nineteen seniors on that team. Is what I was told nineteen seniors. That's huge. So I see some people in the press back there. Make note of that nineteen seniors. It's probably a cool story to write about because I think it's a special team at Heritage this year. That's that piece. Second, or not second, this is probably. Oh, and thank you to Liberty University because they're hosting the championship. So regardless of who's in it, they're hosting the two championship games. So thank you for doing that. Next piece I've got is a couple work sessions ago in roll call, I asked some things about the authority of the treasure. And I did not see that those questions responded to in our memo that we got after that. I went looking for it. So just kind of wondering what the what the authorities of the of the treasure are, what authorities are there that maybe aren't being executed right now, so to speak. If the new treasurer were to decide to try to take those back, what does that look like? Also, got a lot. Congratulations and thank you to Robert Bailey for his many years of service to the city as our treasurer because he just announced his retirement today. He's actually going to be resigning early for for personal reasons. So we just want to thank him for that and I want to I'm asking you right now, Mr. Mayor, let's make sure we we give him the same honors that we give a council member when they depart and let's let's give Mr. Bailey a key to the city when for his retirement. I think I think he's earned that. He's served our citizens for many years and we thank him for that. And then finally, I think dovetailing on some of the remarks that Councilmember Reed and Councilmember Timmerade. Right now, we're not in compliance with the city manager's contract regarding performance evaluations. It was supposed to be done in May or June. So let's find out what we need to do to get in compliance with that contract because I believe we as a body should be in compliance with that contract with the city manager.
I will.
That's all I got. Thank you.
I will. First of all, I'd like to thank the city manager, my clerk of council and my attorney. Thank you all for all the hard work you do. And I know people. We're all fallible. We might miss something somewhere. But we may, we're fallible. And to make you feel to make people feel that they are lowered and low because I've been there. I've been there. People people made me feel so low that I wanted to quit a job, but I had a family to take care of. I would drive from Richmond, drive from Charlotte, I mean Lynchburg to Richmond. Down Tobacco Grove, I had twenty guys under me, but I had a superintendent. Old tobacco chewing superintendent from up in the mountain. And he would say things to me, belittle me in front of the men, make me feel real low. But I refused to quit because I had Larry Junior at the house trying to buy a house. And I I know how y'all feel sometime. When when you're accused and and say, well, if you don't give me this paper by noon time tomorrow, you know, you're going to pay for it. Or something to that effect. I trust Alicia. She's been doing this job for eight years. Total eight years. You know what you're doing. You know what to do. And and God forbid that you miss anything. But I I know that you try to your best. Matt, you give me wise counsel. You tell me when to keep my mouth shut. Or whatever, whatever I asked you for, you get it to me. I'm proud of you, proud of both of you. Keep doing your jobs. You get you go through the contracts that the city need. Make sure they get done. Millions of dollars come through. Even the manager. Millions of dollars. I I think I've watched over what nine hundred million dollars come through Lynchburg in the last couple of months. People agreeing with contracts for the city and want to add to the business of city. So y'all keep doing your job. I got your back. Be comfortable in your positions and we we're going to keep our minutes. We're going to keep going forward and we're not going to keep visiting old stuff. That's what we're going to do. We are Lynchburg. That's what we're going to do. We are Lynchburg City Council. We got to be light. We're going to get it right. So y'all keep doing what you're doing. I'm proud of you. Thank you all. Thank you very much. And on another note, my family go all the way back to the Civil, not the Civil War, but the Revolutionary War. The key side of my family were free people. They fought for this country, coming all up through the Civil War. I got records of my family in World War II. I got an uncle that was in the Navy. He refused to speak again because he was treated so bad on the ship. Black guys during World War II on the ship, they kept the ship moving. They had to keep the coals in the hoppers. My brother did every tour from 1978 up to pass Desert Storm. Marine gunny sergeant, he moved up through from high school. We came in Lance Corporal, moved on up to a gunny. During the Iraq War, he led the Marines out of Kuwait going up to Baghdad. So I know fighting men. They gave their blood for this country. And we just can't just roll over and let anything happen. So I'm proud of my council. My council staff, I'm proud of you. Keep doing the job. Keep fighting the good fight. If you have any problems, I'm your mayor. Thank you all.
I'd like to do a regular roll call.
I thought you did.
Well, that was the agenda item. Still like to do a regular roll call.
Okay, do your regular roll call.
Do want to thank staff. I want to be clear, nothing I said tonight was intended to be directed individually. I didn't name names. I talked about positions. We all bring to this council our own perspective and our backgrounds. And mine includes being a manager of hundreds of people in my life. And I bring that perspective that I understand my role. I don't know why they couldn't go to HR. That was news to me that folks couldn't feel that they could have, you know, use those services of HR. I certainly would encourage you to if you feel the need. I certainly don't want to create a hostile work environment. I do want to take my time tonight to just say we, I individually make requests all the time, so I want to straighten that out. We all do. I've made requests all day today individually. We do that. That's all we do. And I get a great response 99.9% of the time, and I really do appreciate staff's efficiency. However, I do understand my role as the appointed body that oversees certain staff that council appoints, and making sure they're accountable to do their jobs is part of our role. I don't think I create a hostile work environment. I think the veterans we're honoring today, they know what a real hostile work environment is. And I think that's something that I haven't seen any evidence of. I certainly have tried not to create that in any way, shape, or form. If you're doing a great job, I'll be the first to commend you. If you've watched council, you know that. However, if I feel like we could get better and we have room for improvement, and you said we're all humans, I'm not going to hesitate to do that as well. I'll usually talk to you individually, which I can assure you, anybody watching this, I have talked to staff personally and individually before ever bringing any staff issues up in front of the full council or on live TV. It's not the way I operate. When I run out of people listening to me, when I am asked to leave offices, when I am asked to silence myself with threats of losing my title as vice mayor included in it, I respond very, much like my mom and dad responded to such things. I can be pretty ornery about that. You're not going to intimidate me. You're not going to threaten me. I stand for what is right and what is transparent and for the citizens and for the power that you have loaned to us, citizens of Lynchburg. And I take that seriously, and it includes oversight of staff. And I love staff. I love them individually as my savior encourages me to do. But if I see something that I think is needing improvement, I'm going to go to them and I'm going to talk to them about, I'm going to follow Matthew 18, which I have, and I'm going to try to get things resolved privately. But if that doesn't work, I'm certainly available to talk about it. And I've written editorials about this minutes issue, and I feel very strongly that those are the people's minutes, not just city councils, because we're their representatives. So those are the people's records. And modifying records is a serious thing in the Commonwealth of Virginia. I don't want to see that happen. I want our records to be truthful and honest. And I want to continue to be able to make a request individually to staff. I also want to be able to know that the request I heard tonight to silence us even more and to allow us not to talk to staff. I absolutely 100% unequivocally reject that idea. We need to be able to talk to staff. That's, I just explained why. And any attempt to silence me from talking to staff will be met with the strongest opposition. That is the last thing we need to do. That will create division on this council like you've never seen. Silencing people is not the answer. So thank you again for letting me finish my comments.
Yes, sir. Next meeting at 7 o'clock downstairs.